Okay. Any member of the commission staff in the public who has any items, items on the consent agenda, being removed and placed as the last item under new business, you can see full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected. We have three items, A, approved in November first, twenty twenty two, regular meeting minutes as presented. B, CPR management purchase. Consider the recommendation from DMS Director Wenda Wilson to authorize the city manager to approve the purchase order. Natural steel with dollars forty five hundred. C, agreement with North Central Michigan College and Hampton Political Ride Along. Consider the recommendation for DMS Director Brandon Wilson to authorize the city manager to sign a agreement with North Central Michigan College. Any questions for the audience on the agenda? Commissioners?
I may press to a whole agenda or concession.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with our A and C. And we will move item three down to the re-business as amended the agenda. Give her a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have citizen comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who has in the audience who would like to make a comment to the mission, express an opinion to the community or the city? But a non-agenda item, you're limited to five minutes, and I ask that you go to the reporting, state your name and address. Ron?
Hi, I'm Ryan Project, eleven twenty one Project President, one city. There's one city. On my citizen comments is that two weeks ago, we collect flags from the cemetery. The American Legion does, and we've been doing this as far back as our folks can remember, back in the early seventies. We repartook, and we distributed those flags. Seven hundred fifty flags. We do not get them this year. Our city manager has decided to refurbish the flags and the used flags that were put on their graves site. This last summer, it will be refloated on the graves next summer if they aren't tattered or so on so forth. That's a disrespect to all the veterans in our city. Our post is very upset about it. And it's another factor that the city has disgracing the veterans again. And they ought to be ashamed of themselves and everything else. We take those flags and we hand them out during the summer on our own time. And this is always leave help out to city by taking the flags and hand them out parades and ceremonies and tell the kids that if a flag flown on veterans grave, this is disrespect. So next summer, when there's a flag, put on the grave site that is discolored and so on so forth. And the people call us and ask, well, how come? Would you have to tell them, well, the city is trying to save money? And that's all it is, saving money when there's other things that are more important than disgracing the veterans. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
To begin on five oh seven Spring Street, I have a question actually for the entire commission. And it's in regards to the city manager, the evaluation process. I just wonder what the process is for evaluating the city manager, when that's done. When I've been here in the past, typically that's always done by the fall. And I'm not aware of that being done yet this year. I would hope that would be done on a yearly and annual basis. So I have a lot of questions like regarding that. Do we have a committee that does that, who serves on it? What forms that we use to evaluate that, when it's going to be done, if it's not been done? And I think that's critical. We need to hold people accountable for other responsibilities and duties. We need to commend them when they need to be commended, but that needs to be done. And I'm not aware of it being done yet, and I would like some answers to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, we have correspondence.
Eric?
Yeah, there was one item that was received after the agenda packet went out that probably should be frowned and helped made aware of tonight. If you'd like me to, there's a Consumers Energy rate hearing request that they're going to be having a public hearing on it on Wednesday, November thirtieth at nine AM. I'll have the information up here and we'll put it on the website as an agenda. And we did correspond a few people know where to find it. But this just came in the mail and that hearing is going to be before our next meeting, so I'm happy to bring it up.
And then, sure. I would also like to add, I should have read this in the comments, open comments about citizens comments. But if we receive any question during citizen comment, they'll be addressed at the time. Right now, if you can have the answer to that. If the question cannot be answered at today's meeting, it will be directed to city staff and the city commission. And you will be provided an answer in a reasonable amount of time, but no longer than our next meeting. So let's be, and you can expect the figure to be in the next.
Thank you.
Like city managers.
Yes, sir. The November eighth election went very smoothly here in Wayne City. Nineteen hundred and sixty nine people voted, nine hundred of them were by absentee ballot. I'd like to extend congratulations to City Clerk Treasurer Jessica Pearl and her team of city employees and election working workers are doing a very commendable job. The Wayne City Main Street program reports that the earlier than the bird was a big success this last weekend with lots of visitors to our community and good sales numbers that are being reported by some of our local businesses. Main Street contractor for installing the big holiday lights, such as the snowflakes and some of the decorations on buildings, are putting the fishing touches on them, and they're going up today. On this coming Friday, after Thanksgiving on the twenty fourth. That'd be the twenty fifth, Holly, Friday, Holly Jelly Boeing takes place and the parade will be starting at six PM. And festivities continue downtown until nine PM. The big holiday tree, which is being, is lit tonight in Sunset Park for some photographing, will be turned off and then relit again that evening. But many businesses will have their doors open to greet the holiday shoppers. Consumers Energy is beginning a tree trimming and removal program north of the river here in Wayne City and extending north into Evangeline Township to protect their power lines and increase system reliability. That can start as early as this week, and they expect it to go on for two or three months. Property owners on property adjacent to the trees should be getting a postcard in the mail from consumers that will be explaining the program. And it also provides you contact information. The city's annual audit is now complete and available for review here at City Hall. By next week, it'll be available at the library and also online. The city again received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest rating possible. With the recent snows, the warming house is open for slutters at Avalanche Park. Hours are four to nine PM on weekdays, so you can still go out there and get a couple runs in if you'd like tonight. And eleven to nine PM on weekends, weather permitting. It has not been cold enough, long enough to begin work on the ice rink yet. And the last couple of days, we have had some warm weather and a little bit of the snow. And there is a possibility with whether this, in the near future, that we may have to close the warming house until winter returns again. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and if you have any questions on these other items, I'd be glad to try and address them.
Thank you for your questions. Oh. I would just like to add my comments that picture that on the last, appreciate everything that's given. Moving on, there's courts and office board and standing committee. We have financial corporate wanting to find the thing. Any questions on that? I got a couple of, okay, I'm already. Moving on, then move to all business. Item A, Marina revised concept for focal. Consider the regulation from city manager Michael Kim to review the information presented and give public input regarding alternate content layouts, and when ready, consider collecting and adopting the rule. So I believe we have Mike Morphy here from.
Abbott Marsh Consult, correct.
So do you want to? Mike?
He's right here in the front row. Mike Morphy, he's been no stranger to Boeing City. He's been helping us with this process for a number of years, and he'll be going through what's taken place in the last month or so since the city commission basically outlined a footprint for the marina to work within. Mike has met with our subcommittee doing this. He's bringing forward, as was approved by the city commission, a one primary alternate, and that's labeled alternate one. It's the first drawing there. The city commission may recall that the original proposal was to provide three alternates for a price of about twelve thousand dollars. I think when that was presented to the city commission, we trumped that down to one alternate for a price of about seven thousand, we go to seven. Plus incident. In developing that alternate one concept, which was contracted for, and in discussions with the subcommittees, they also provided two other alternates, and they are in order, alternate two and alternate three. They are not charging us extra for these, but they came up with these concepts as they were developing alternate one and thought it was worth presenting to the city commission to see if you had any interest in components of any of them altogether. Mike will go over the slip counts, but briefly, alternate one provides seventy eight slips, alternate two eighty, and alternate three eighty five. Those are all within the reduced. There was a cost, a basic cost estimate provided, that was only provided for alternate one, as was in the reduced scope of our request and agreement with Abbott Marsh. The cost for alternate, alternate one is estimated to be five million, two hundred and sixty six thousand, eight hundred and twenty eight dollars. Like mentioned by the mayor, Mike is here to kind of go through these in more detail and to answer any questions that he can here yet this evening. So without any further ado for me, just a moment.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. King. Right, you're muted. All right. Thanks for the review of the scope of work. We were tasked to look at a single concept for the marina rather than three alternates. But as we got into it, we started to look at some slight deviations between the two and three. So we figured, let's bring them all three and let's discuss the differences and find out if there's any interest in pursuing them or whatever. So I want to go over just a couple of things here. First of all, there is a, there are two DNR waterways grants that were awarded to the, those are still outstanding, and the DNR has been great to work with. Letting them know the city's taken a step back to really reevaluate where it's going with the marina and what the right plan is for the facility. The DNR has been receptive to that, they've asked for updates, and I spoke recently with the grants coordinator of the waterways commission. He's patiently awaiting some update as far as where the city goes. So I think we're in good standing currently. Just need to provide them updates with direction this, this decided upon. So starting back in the end of September, remember the Marina Committee got a lot of helpful feedback in looking at different options and the direction that the marina needs to go. We did have a follow up meeting at the end of October to review the first concept we put together and how we got to that form. And then, beginning of November, submitted the three different concepts, kind of cost like to get the first one. So a couple of things I just wanted to go over, we got some really great, really good feedback, really great ideas from a number of the city's residents. And I really appreciate the work that it took to put that feedback together. We did evaluate every single point in those emails and those sketches that we provided. And there are reasons that we went away from some of the things, but there's certainly a lot of getting put in there. So really appreciate the communities involved in that. And I'd be happy to answer more specific questions about any of those after meeting with the one of them. So first things first, we looked at the footprints that were provided to us to reduce the footprint to the northwest of the marinas, and we basically eliminated the northern extension. Which was kind of part of the master plan from two thousand and eight and moving forward to the phase one implementation, under years back. So that part of the, the other part that was reduced is that the attenuator on the outside of the facility, we took a different angle from the public dock, so we actually narrowed down on that footprint a little bit more in that spot. So again, a reduced footprint to try to minimize the impact on Lake Charlotte Boy, also to minimize impacts on view, view jets. I know that was a big part of the public's concern with the marina. So typically what we would do when we have a footprint for marinas is try to maximize that because when you maximize the number of slips, you're able to capture revenue, but they force some of the non-revenue generating parts of it, like the. So in this case, we really pushed to let us try to fit as many slips as we can into these. And I just want everyone to know that once we go through a financial analysis down the line, that these can be right sized, they can be reduced from this point. But what you're looking at here is an attempt to maximize those footprints as many steps as we can within that given area. So just so you know, we're. So a couple of things, the other part of that is, and you can kind of see on these drawings, I'm sure it's really hard to see from the seats in the audience, probably on the video. The contours are shown there for the, the tree. There are a few areas that are shallow near the east side of the marina, and try to stay away from that for some of the party folks that will need more doubt. So you'll know that there's smaller slips towards the east and generally larger slips in the middle of the facility and the west side of the facility. The other thing we looked at are, were differences to the attenuator. It's still shown as one side of the attenuator, one side of floating attenuator. Of course, phase one was constructed out there a couple of years ago. We did look at continuing a segment of attenuator, like what's out currently with the multi-piece attenuator. The problem when you do that is you start to have to stagger them to cover those openings, and that requires those two rows of attenuators. So what happens is you start eating into that footprint. So what happens is you start eating into that footprint and you start to lose your capacity for slips. So we did think about that. I did like the idea. Um it's still a possibility that we end up producing the number of slips in some fashion. Um but for now, to maximize that footprint, we stayed with the the solid attenuator. Okay, so uh the three differences, uh I'm gonna step away and hopefully the microphone still pick up my voice. But concept one uh is different from what we did previously uh last year. And then we changed the way that this dock could be planned, E dock is configured. Basically came off of the piece that's already constructed with a single uh very double sided back and that's a very efficient way. Cost wise to build slips and we have slips on both sides of the main gear. We kept the pump out station at the T head of that as we was playing last year. And that is built again right off of the existing dock that's there. You can see dock essentially as it is. And then D dock essentially flipped from what we had last year. What we tried to do is match as closely as we could. The slips that hold the existing slips. So that that fairway could be the right size and give the most use out of it. So again, all these things to try to maximize the use of space. Um and then on the end of D dock and on this concept, we show a perpendicular uh slip forty for twelve. And that's still the handle of larger transient vessel, could be a seasonal vessel. Um and the reason that I mentioned that is that takes a fair amount of footprint. It affects how much we can build E dock out. And it affects really, that's really the only place where we can put that slip. If you put that any further in the marina, we have to deal with making sure that we have enough fairway for it. So that's concept one and that's what we did in that slip for. Contingency and engineering. Concept two is essentially really close to what we did last fall. Uh we kept B dock how we did last fall. Accommodating those slips that were lost in the northern extension into that area. Uh we kept E dock the same as concept one, so we put it from last year. And then one of the things we did a little differently in B dock is we rotated it back to ninety degrees. We had to reduce the size of those steps. We can no longer have eighty quarter because there isn't enough fairway between that and the attenuator. Um but in doing that, rotating them, we no longer need the fairway to the east and that allowed E dock to get longer to handle a couple more slips. So that's one reason on the first one, you see seventy eight slips. Second concept, we're up to eighty seven. But we really like the efficiency of that first gear. And we like to have a D dock on this one. So that's why we did a third concept and combined those two. So like B dock has this real additional down on pole station on the end of it. B dock has the uh perpendicular dock on the end. So we're able to get a couple sixty quarters in there and a couple of one thirty quarter at the end of it. And then E dock is allowed to expand out further. That really maximizes the footprint. I don't think you're gonna fit any more slips in this given footprint of a lot of different configurations. So that well, that shows eighty five slips. That's what I think is a realistic maximization on space. They can always be reduced or right sized to regulatory needs or to financial restrictions uh or different things. Um so my personal preference is is concept three. I think we get the whole best of both worlds from either two. And I think the cost for these three is going to be similar. Uh we need to do a little bit more valuation, guess where it's at and check the check the cost. One other note, um there was a lot of feedback regarding small boat launch. Uh we agree that that probably needs to be reconfigured and there could be some improvements to get better use out of that and the upwind space. Uh but we we just left it where it is for the sake of this process and nothing really after the change anything. We just show it the same place. And then the last part is there was some discussion last year and some oppositions to the use of broadside mooring on the attenuators. Uh we think that that's a decision that it's up to the city whether or not you want to allow that. There's lots of possibilities. You're only allowing on certain events or just not allowing it altogether. But there is space for it. In these plans uh that that it could handle it. I think that's pretty much it from my view. Um so I guess I would.
Yeah, just to address the broadside mooring um. In the conversation that I approached you with, maybe. Just for the rest of the commissioners to have that same input from you. Can you explain why that essentially is going to be like a policy more or less the community and why? You don't think it's important for us to pursue that financially because of the less than one percent?
Yeah, so um. The first thing actually I became involved was project back in twenty sixteen and the Marina Master Plan had been developed. We actually had a finger appears at one point coming off of the attenuator out here. And in looking at some of the wave events that happen and the need for the attenuator. Uh we we had some discomfort about mooring goes to the seasonal basis or a long-term transient basis that could be less said. Like you know, the storm could cause damage to the boat or something is there. It's possible. And so what we did in the last plan was we tried to move all the slips into the floating docks and we were able to do that. Particularly in this north section, we're with Saint Louis slips and not need to have them on the attenuator. So that speaks to what we think that attenuator should be. It's a short-term mooring opportunity. That could handle boats. It's a it's a floating attenuator can handle boats. Um but on a on a reservable long-term basis, it's it's not going to be think we want more boats. So a short-term event. A weekend where the forecast looks good and is managed as possible. But again, that's that's a that's a management decision as far as how that how the attenuators handle. Does that answer the question, Commissioner?
Yeah, essentially so. The conversation that that meeting at that time was. Your input was, you know, obviously you can't go out there and get reservation slips for, you know, the middle of June. You don't know what inclement weather looks like. You don't know the risk um for that inclement weather, but ultimately you were saying that. Looking at the finances of that, um it's less than one percent at the end of the year. Um so if we're if we're looking. And my input on that conversation then was, okay, how do we, how do we move forward to find progress here and essentially um. It wasn't something that was worth pursuing um and making a commitment commitment because it was such a low percentage.
Right, I think because of the agreement with the state of Michigan. Harvest program, there's a certain number of changes that the facility has to maintain. Right, and those can be maintained and the rest of the facilities, so. Uh transient slips as well, so not a huge part of the revenue, I think seasonals. So uh yeah, I agree with that. I think it's a relatively small portion of revenue to have most of them there. Uh helpful for an overflow and emergency or those types of scenario.
And declared by. Mike, there will be no utilities out on the attenuators and therefore it's not a desirable long term.
Right, that would that would save a lot of money on that utilities out there. Uh we haven't envisioned that at this time. Uh and that by nature, that's going to restrict who's going to want more there.
I'm sure you answered the question, how would the. Pump out station, is that something that would have to be banned? Uh Mike's staff or is that something that voters can do this all back?
Most voters will know where to do that. Um I don't think you necessarily have it banned, but usually you're gonna want to have some crowd uh to tie out and then. But most voters want to do that. And and it's it's actually something that you should have. Um it used to be that in the state of Michigan, you can get a green permit. And you could say, well, there's a pump out at the facility next door and we gotta learn from them saying that we can use it even if it's for a fee. But uh in recent years, I I see an opposition to that. So they like to see you never get a green permit from Marina's public or private. So it's really something that should be.
Should be banned then.
Ideally, yeah, you have.
Um yes, we would. Uh we haven't had, we haven't done that because we haven't had an operating pump out for a number of years.
Right.
Uh but yes, that should be a significant change for the staff.
So again, um I ask that you go to the podium to give the name and address. We're limited by the limits. Uh we'll try and answer all your questions at the end of your comments if you have questions. So I guess we're lined up. We're gonna get a queue that's taking nine. So uh who would like to uh start out?
Penny was Penny, already called thirty-seven North Street, Point City. First of all, thank you for leaving the. Lake side new with all the benches that have been donated to people. Late, that's truly appreciated. Uh secondly. I'm really questioning, look at the volume of boats now who have an area that will not have really good flow. Have you talked to the D N R or any experts? Um what kind of pollution is is that might cause? If we're more likely to have algae pools in there. Um you know, it has to be fiscally responsible, I think environmentally responsible. And it has to add value for everyone, not just boaters. And if you ruin the fishing completely. There are more fishermen than people on your way. I hate to tell you, but it's the truth. Um and the other thing I'm really concerned about is Abbott Marsh not designing. A little boat launch there, including that, that is part of that arena. And that other boat launch is so overwhelmed during the height of summer. That at least you can get small boats going in through here. It's a game and so win-win for everyone. It can't be that expensive and why the heck that has to be refigured wasn't that done in planning? I don't understand. It's like going backwards. When you get a plan, you need a plan that works all the way through for every part of it. And that little boat launch is part of it. It's been there a long time. It's used by a lot of locals. It accommodates small boats and that parking lot down there is overloaded. We actually could use another big boat launch down there, but we don't have the land to do it. So why on earth would you make it more difficult to use this? So I guess my my concern. Yes, he does compromise and thank you very much. Have you considered everything that needs to be considered? I don't think so. This plan's been going on for twenty years. There should have been lots of time. Have put the D N R to check water quality, to do core samples of the bottom. Sounds like we might have to do a little bit of dredging. What are we gonna bring up? I think all of these things need to be answered before there's a plan put into motion. Thank you.
Well, Mike, would you have a little bit of any questions with the number of increasingly boats? What have you been permitting that is going to involve in a large smoke and small boat launch?
Yes, thanks. Thanks for the comments. Um with regard to the D N R and water quality, uh this is about one of the most open marinas. Uh that we've worked on, a lot of them are far more enclosed with cheap mowing or great waters. And these are all floating docks, so the water circulation is going to be less of a concern here than almost any other marina. Uh but we do have to go through state and federal permitting and we have gone through state and federal permitting. There are open permits to build the original plan right now. So next steps after this would include repermitting and modified permit uh for this plan. So that would certainly be a consideration. Fisheries, D N R have the opportunity to review it. The second one, uh the launch can continue to operate how it does now. Uh the focus here was on a new marina layout. The launch can certainly be reconfigured and redesigned, but we didn't want to distract from what we're trying to do here on how to come up with a plan to move forward. I think the plan is that the launch is going to stay there as it's depicted in these plans. Uh that could be part of the project. It could be reconfigured. Uh we've looked at the other launch uh in years past as well and understand that that has a capacity issue. Unfortunately, it's on the size of parcel that it's on and that can't really change. Uh so it would take purely an acquisition to make that bigger. Um I think there was one other comment, maybe I forgot. Oh, with regard to dredging, this plan is intended to minimize work. Um it's not intended to need any dredging. So we've inserted the the telemetry in the layout so that the smaller slips. Are in an area that will still have five feet of water at all time with water. Uh in that eastern area, the rest of the facility is in water that should not be dredging uh initially. So that that was considered. So I think that's, I think that covers those questions.
Just I got a few final questions in regards to, so say we uh. Cause obviously we're looking at revenue, the slip capacity here. Um just like ballpark, if we were going to do a revamp of the boat launch there, what would that um investment look like? And what's the odds of rebooting? Say, okay, you know, it's five point eight billion dollars to do this concept here. Say we want to throw another two million dollars on redoing the boat launch there. So now we're, you know, seven point eight million dollars. Um what's the odd, what does it look like generating revenue off investing two million dollars in a boat launch?
Well, on a small boat launch, I understand this is a pretty well-used launch uh certain times of the year with small boats. I think there's a fee that could be charged to use it and to recruit some of that. Um as far as how big you pay that, I'm not sure, but. Uh my guess is that redoing that launch to maintain its current use in a better way is going to be far less than two million dollars and everything. You know, that's probably a half a mile or less to redo that. And provide better, I think the main thing is it's a minor relative to stronger. From what I understand and the way that payments um organized right now, it's really difficult for people to back in on an angle to get that right. Right, so some relatively simple things in the crew de operation there. You wouldn't want to turn that into the same purpose as the other boat launch unless you're able to drive the parking.
Right.
For those boats, because then you're really putting yourself on the line in that side.
Is there, looking at the parking, and I know this was a conversation we had in the committee meetings. Um of what's even available with what we can do with the boat launch there um because of the parking. Um. So I guess what? Can you bring that conversation out in light of as far as eliminating parking and, you know, how we address that in the committee meeting as far as? We really don't have the option, just like we are stuck with the boat launch that we are over there to the size of a lot. Um what the gentleman that was working with you, I think at one point in time, you guys pulled up these overlay maps and you showed. You know, that committee at that time, basically, we don't have the spacing to increase that boat launch. Because increasing that boat launch is going to increase the need for the parking and it doesn't exist essentially.
That's exactly right. So with the small boats that use it now, it's it's kind of governed by the the demand for that particular launch, the the small launch here. And if you start to improve it and make it larger, you're just gonna increase the demand for it and there's not a place to handle those boats now. I think, I think there is a boat trailer parking issue because the other launch can't handle all boats that want to use it and there's. It's a very limited access to Lake Charlotte when I'm ascending the lake, right, which is. So that's the spot that gets all the traffic and especially on, you know, hot weekends and out there because. There's probably some creative solutions out there, alternative parking on site. Uh providing some some shuttle at certain times of the year, maybe, maybe on the peak use times uh for that. Um here at the small boat launch, maybe there's some things that could be done. Um there's some grassy area that I know is used uh you know during peak events, six point thunder uh to park cars on and that's not ideal. Year round, but maybe there's a peak, peak events for some of that gets considered.
Don, I've been the two-two-six, Lord three Wednesday. Um one of the things that you talked about there. Um or didn't talk about is how many of those sites are new sites? How mu- how many have you added to each one? What, how many did we start out with and how many have you added to each each of these? How much bigger is it? How much bigger is it going to be on the regular, jam into that regular footset? And I'm going to try not to repeat what Penny said, but some of my ideas are the same here. How many fishermen are in here? Would it increase the fish? Well, let's just say you're down in the mouth of the river. And I don't know how many boats come in and out of there, or that fairway is, the fishing is gone. The kids in town, that's one place that you go by there any day in the summer. It'll be lined up with kids, people, I've gone down and talked with a lot of people from all the town. Those same people spend money in our stores and gas stations. They're, they actually come there to fish. And when the boats are in there, in the fall and spring, it's not that big a deal, but if you take boats across that mouth of that river, first of all, I don't see how the DNR will okay that right across. It's stopping fishing. But there wouldn't be no fish there, basically. If you, that, that L-shaped piece that's on the bottom there, that is actually a fishing pier. It's been called the shopper's dock for years. That was put in as a fishing dock. There used to be a boat on the lake that took tourists all around for dinner and whatnot, and that was put in as a fishing pier when that boat was not there. That went belly up, it's been a called a shopper's dock, it was said, but it's really a fishing dock, and that will be gone. I just hate to see kids move out of that in town here, because that's, that's going to be the main group that's going to affect. And I don't see anything wrong with putting a few extra sites in there, but you know, I could find out how many are there, that would be helpful too, I guess. And as far as, we've already stopped ice fishing out there. Somebody made a comment at one of our other meetings this fall here, that, no, there's no ice fishermen out there anymore. That doesn't bother them at all. Well, because you can't get on the lake. It's unsafe. I've spoken on that several times. That last dock that you have in, you put there the last time, has a bubble on it that makes the ice unsafe all the way to the end of the little lake point. And somebody's going to get hurt there. And I would ask again that you sign that because it makes it current. I've got pictures of it, and in the spring, it'll be open water, it'll be ice here, an open water, just like a river out there. And I know when the fire department worked out there, you know, those last spring or not, there was three inches of ice there. And there was solid ice on either side and nothing there. And as far as celebrating smeltania, you've already stopped access to the lake. That's where everybody went out. You cannot walk in the mouth of the river. You got a docks on both sides. In fact, kids have had been rescued out there a couple of years ago. Were out on the ice, couldn't find a safe place to get back to shore. So that, that should take a a part in this too. And the other thing, I guess, is the cost of it. I'm sure that that's going to come up in future meetings here, but I think if you're spending five million dollars, it should go to a boat of the people. Citizens of Point City should make that decision. There shouldn't be five people here, whatever it is. As I said, as far as this small boat ramp there, if you tell them they've got to go down, put in, down at the main ramp down there, that's a safety issue. The guy's got a twelve-foot boat. He wants to fish the mouth of the river. That's not safe for him to come all the way down there. The wind can come up. That's bad enough for a big boat trying to put in at that ramp up there. If the, if the the wind comes up here down the lake. I would sure hate to see that go out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, could you answer Mr. Lafferty's question about the memory splits now compared to what you proposed?
Yeah, I think it's that slips now obviously ranging from, they were from seventy-eight to eighty-five. I think we have existing layout back here. What they were in the sixty-three range now.
Forty-four, turning to eighty-four.
Forty-one. There you go. Yeah, thank you for the suggestion.
Did you hear that sound? Forty-four, thirty-eight, what components, the low seventies, the low eighths, is that correct?
And again, part of the, part of the deal there is trying to maximize the footprint, trying to look at what could fit there. Of course, there's a, we, branch is part of that, a very important part of that, because you have to be worth that.
Hello, everybody. James Richmond, seven-two-nine Lake Park Drive. Jessica, Commissioners, Mayor, Michael, thank you for your time tonight. I, I want to say that this is a really difficult subject. I know it's very divisive, and people get pretty angry about it. I want to remind everybody that Boeing is a special place and people work together here, whether Republican, Democrat, or rich or poor. If there's a goal, Boeing City is going to accomplish that goal and work together. So let's remember that if we don't agree, that we're all citizens here in Boeing. We're lucky to be here. I looked, I looked at the marina. I like concept three. Why? Because it maximizes the space. I think it's well-designed. I don't want a boat. Maybe one day I will. But I know a lot of people want a slip. I think it'll be good for our businesses, whether they're retail or restaurants. People come here from all over the place. I was just at a meeting last Friday with the mayor, Charlevoix. And whether you're from Harbor Springs, Potaski, people always say we want to be more like Boeing. Okay, so I say this proposal, it's not ideal. There's always pros and cons. It's not perfect. But I appreciate the efforts that everybody's put toward this. It's twenty years in the making. And I think it's an improvement. Hopefully, I have a, a almost two-year-old son, a little girl on the way. She'll be here in a month. And I want her to grow up in a city that's thriving. And I want her to go to sailing school. I want my son to go to sailing school, and hopefully one day they'll have an opportunity to have a boat here. I'm also involved with Boeing Thunder, which a lot of people find annoying, but it's an amazing cause. Helps kids with cancer go to camps. It helps mental, mentally challenged adults and children, and part of that goes back to Main Street, which ultimately goes back to our community. If you look around and you aren't proud of Boeing City and what it's become, I haven't been here for twenty years. I've been here for going on six. And it's, it just gets better and better. So let's be a place that works together for positive. And if it doesn't go through, that doesn't mean I don't love you. If you disagree with me, it's, we'll still be working on other projects together, so. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would ask if you, if you intend to speak, if you could kind of line up the nine hundred.
I'm sorry, I'll be in my office. Eighty-four, five-twenty-six, Lincoln Street. That eighty-foot slip, by the way, Mike, is a seasonal well currently. And as far as the broadside mooring goes, I'll go back to the twenty-twenty-one analysis that was done for the bond. And at that point, the broadside mooring was supposed to be a revenue of about sixteen thousand dollars. And that was based on a very similar layout to your alternate three, where the total revenue is going to be a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year for the full expansion that you were going for two years ago. So that's like ten percent of the revenues. When Baker Tilly did their analysis, interest rates were considerably lower. I believe they used, well, they said conservative would be two-point-two percent. As far as the debt service, I'm one point million dollar, one point six million dollar bonds, and aggressive would be one point seven percent. And I don't think that kind of money is available anymore. Six, we got five-point-three million dollar project. We talked about the environmental. There was a letter by DNR about the impact on the fisheries, and we talked about the small boats using the small boat launch. Recreational carrying capacity on this lake is off the charts. And by the way, the ones that have disappeared in the boat count are the little boats. The big boats, the yachts over thirty-two feet are the ones that were the increase. So yes, there were forty-four slips, there are forty-four slips now. And in the revenue projections, as Mr. Kane had pointed out back in March, you know, the direction had been for twenty years to expand. Well, year and a half ago, the people turned over the commission a year ago over this project. Guaranteed, the biggest thing in everybody's mind was this marina. So let me do a little math. The five-point-three million was done on a full expansion to fund a one-point-six million dollar bond. So this one costs five point three. We're short three point seven million. Million. There are seven or nineteen thousand dollars available in grants, which the city has to come up with a fifty percent match. So I put us at about two-point-three million dollars short. And funding is a big issue that we're going to have to face with this. So I'm, I'm basically saying there is a huge contention in this community that is not for expansion of the marina. They've been very clear they're not for the expansion of the marina. And it's beyond my imagination how you're going to fund it. Now, back a while ago in March, Mr. Kane, excuse me, August, Mr. Kane issued a memo. And he said, the existing layout that Abbott Marsh estimated that would cost between two-point-two and two-point-seven million dollars to rebuild what we have. That's a far cry from the five-point-three million dollars we're talking here. And the bonding at that point, he was using five percent. So I don't know that this is even a feasible thing to consider. Forget the emotional part, to help people feel the fiscal part. I hear some of the commissioners say it's fiscally irresponsible for us not to take grant money. But we're two-point-three million dollars short. There was a question asked by Marty at that point in time about bonds, or excuse me, what a millage increase would bring. And one mill would earn about two-hundred-twenty-seven thousand dollars. So I would love to live in a brand new house, but I can't afford it. So I live within my needs. And, you know, people feel very strongly. I know Mr. Kane said this has been the direction for years and years and years, otherwise you wouldn't have put a five-hundred K of T dock. But the people have been resisting, and they've been hoping for a very long time for a whole lot of reasons. And I really think it's time to stop or put it to a halt. Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Elcher, thirty-five horse way. I'd like to first thank the commission and certainly the subcommittee for taking their time and putting together the various proposals that are, that are here. I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an easy task. But I could get moving on, because we start making our marina reservations. We don't have a seasonal slip to make our marina reservation starting here in summer, so for us, we try and get around, get a dock that holds water. I'd like a couple of other points that I'd like to talk about. I think that seen in the on the internet that the rate, there's going to be a rate increase. I'm not opposed to rate increase, but the concept of increasing the rates and skipping rail, jumping to a, to a, jumping two rails to get the increase without having marina down this, I think is somewhat far-fetched, or really not. People aren't going to know what's going to be here, what's going to happen, and then you're increasing the rates. I am one, I am a fisherman. I've got a sixteen-foot fishing boat. I am one that would believe that the, that the launch, I think the launch on the north end needs a lot of work. And I think right along with that, you could add a third launch down there on the south side of the two that are there without, without a dock in the middle, meaning the two launches, the two launch bays or the two launch bays that had their docks on the outside, and then the other one, the one that's currently there would still right now, there's two launch bays with a dock in the middle. You could add a launch and then have a dock on the outside of the south end, I believe. Just in here, the people that fish, there's, there was more than five or six, it might be six, but I think it's five parking spots out here in the parking lot for the small, for that small launch. Probably, there's just a, just a question, I guess it's probably maybe because of, maybe because of the dollars and costs associated with pulling out the rip raft, but whether or not there was a conversation on removing the rip raft that goes around the perimeter of the marina. You're able to gain so much. You're able to gain a slip anyway by removing that, putting in the corrugated, that kind of creates a vertical line, I suppose, and and you might get some, might get some reverberation of the waves and things, but it certainly could keep the same number of, you keep the same number of slips that are in any of these, but you move everything in, those are the shore. And then the last thing, this is, this again is just and, and I would say that I am, I'm, I'm not a city resident, so you know, my comments are, are just from a boater's perspective. And I've been boating, I've boated all my life. But most every marina has a waitlist. And there were conversations, there's, I've heard comments before about, oh, we're going to work on the waitlist later, and we're going to do something about the waitlist, and number one, if you increase the, you increase your slips, your waitlist is going to turn over just a little bit more than they have then. And, and a a program that has a waitlist, that has guidelines, and, and and everybody knows about those guidelines. And those guidelines are put in place and enforced by those that need to enforce them both, you know, whether it be the harbor master or city staff. It's probably the biggest way to go. I don't, I don't like, and I don't know how long you've been on the waitlist. And I really like waiting. On the other hand, I don't have a better idea, I don't have a better idea for anything that would work better. I think it's just a natural thing they do, we have to be. So I have, you guys got a tough job, but I thank you for taking it on, and I appreciate your time.
So Mike, one question, Mr. Elder, that was moving the raft, that is considered for the plan?
Yeah, it was, I think, right here. It was something that was considered. It was actually part of one of the input letters that we received, much appreciated. It's a great idea, and I would, I would love to do that. The problem with doing that is it's going to add a lot of costs. You know, she, simple sheet filing section removal of rip raft is going to be in the order of a thousand dollars on your foot to go from the bulkhead all the way around to the small boat ramp is something like seven hundred feet, give or take. So we're talking probably a one to two million dollar ad to do that to the project. The rip raft also is favored by regulatory agencies. It provides habitat. I've walked along there many times in the summers, in the summertime, and seen you know, various forms of, of small fish using that area. So I, I think that's going to be a tough one to make happen, both financially but also from a regulatory standpoint.
Hi, my name is Catherine under seven-two-nine cream, excuse me. I'm really excited about having a new marina. I've been here on the dock for twenty-six years. Not enjoying the, I think fourteen years ago, we added the boat. And there's a lot of issues with the existing structure. Number one, last year, we were on the main dock, which means a lot of revenue. However, the main dock had no electricity, none. Well, we couldn't be on the main dock because we have to have electricity with our boat. So did some other people, like the Malucis and stuff. There is no electricity. So that shows you a part of the brokenness. When you fail even start your boat, luckily, we were moved to, there was some space where we were removed, left front by the office and stuff. My question is, right now, what is going to happen? Is there going to be electricity on that main dock? Because, I mean, the people that have had boats and big boats that need, not, they're 25 or 30, 30 feet. We have to have electricity. And I have to be able to get an answer. If we're put back on that main dock, which I hope we weren't, is there, is there some kind of plan to provide electricity on the existing main dock? And that, that's a big issue now, right now, that's a big issue. So I just wondered if any of you could answer that.
Do you have any other questions, Catherine? Or is that the one question you have?
That, that's the big one right now, but I'm all for this expansion. I really like number three. I don't think there's a big fish in wildlife problem in that area. I doubt it because I've been in a role. So I'm really welcome, Mark and I both welcome this plan that you guys have been working on. I think the same agency, have you been working on this for over twenty years?
Yes, ever, it's been a boat for a long time.
That's what I thought, I mean, something that we really need. I appreciate that you guys are really coming together on this. But just to give you an idea that we can't even have electricity, what, what's going to happen? Is there going to be electricity provided to that main dock? Because a lot of those boats don't have a place to go to. Does anybody know if that's going to be fixed? I don't even know, I never heard the reason why it didn't work. I don't know if somebody hid it, if it was a supportive structure problem or what. But this is a real issue right now, currently.
Why can you answer that? Do you mind if I close the microphone? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
In my understanding is that the county, some modifications had to happen for the gangway to repair it. I believe last year, last spring, in order to do so, the electrical was disconnected. In order to be reconnected, it had to be inspected. The county inspector, electrical inspector said that it didn't have code compliance and couldn't be turned on until ground fault protection was put in place that weren't originally part of a marina system. So the system's been in place so long that it doesn't have updated equipment to meet today's code. And so it was disconnected. He had to look at it and it was ordered to be disconnected. In terms of repairs to it, we've talked about that. We looked at that this spring, which it was. The electrical designer that we worked with. The conclusion was, there were kind of two options. One was a Band-Aid approach, which is still a pretty expensive Band-Aid in the order of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. And that would be to temporarily add some of the protections and reconnect the existing equipment that's there. Knowing well that that dock is thirty two years old or, and that order needs to be replaced at some point. And then that dollar that was spent would be gone. And then if that fix was put in place, it still would be perfect. There would be a lot of issues with ground faults causing trips and things like that. The other option would be to implement parts of a long term plan in anticipation of the new dock. So you would, you would bring in a main, a new main distribution panel and you would feed maybe a new substation where that connects to land and that will have all the modern equipment and that's the code. But then you'd be running conductors out to the new pedestals on the, on the boat dock that you're planning to replace at some point or should be put in place. So not great, not great options. And then further to compit, electrical pedestals for marinas are really far down the supply chain right now. So it's, I've heard different reports that are, you know, tens of weeks to get that equipment. So I think, in my opinion, choosing a direction long term starts to make the short term things more priceable.
Cindy Banner, five oh seven Spring Street. I definitely have some questions and information that I'd love to respond. I found this project for many years. We came here in nineteen ninety one. I'd read through every master plan, every wave study. And what I want to start with is the original, the two thousand master plan. When the engineering firm recognized three things in their master plan, and it's in their opening paragraph. And they recognized that the marina was in need of rehabilitation, the need for transient slips to meet the public demand, and that the existing boat launch should be abandoned. Those are the three things that they would do. And we, and I just want to make sure that those things are being addressed because they've been with us for a very long time. And I keep seeing them change. We pay money to have them do that. And they list the needs, they do the studies, but it changes. And the step has changed because you weren't with us originally. And so I'm going to read directly from the master plan after that opening statement of what they stated. This is coming from the engineering firm and it says, unfortunately, the small bay fronting Ventress Memorial Park and existing marina is too small to allow the city to expand the marina to the optimum number of slips without completely sheltering the bay with permanent breakwaters and filling the bay with toll slips. The center of the bay is too deep for economic construction of permanent breakwaters and floating breakwaters will not withstand rigorous icing and springtime ice buildup conditions. Therefore, expansion of the marina in its present location is limited by the existing water and shoreline condition. So they offered two options in that plan. Option one was the additional fourteen slips for a total of forty, fifty six. Option two in their plan was an additional thirty for a total of seventy two. So now we're in twenty twenty two. And now their recommendation is for seventy eight to eighty five slips. I don't understand that. So they told us what, what we should have and what they would offer. And now we're something completely different. I, I would like an answer to that. Because I read the plan and that's what the firm presented to us here at the city of Wayne City. And that's not at all what those plans are for them. That, that's disturbing to me because, you know, they did the studies, they presented what it would be. And you know, you're right, we're X number of years down here. But that to me just doesn't make any sense whatsoever. People presented about fishing and a boat launch, thank you. They said, you know what, we need to do something with the boat launch. And when I hear, yep, the smoke off the smoke, but watch it's going to be there. It, we can do some things for it, but what? And here's the reason that I have concern. Because in that initial study that they did, they presented a boat, a plan for the boat launch for the expansion down here. And they utilized properties that the city didn't own for additional parking. It's not feasible. It was the parking where the mobile room trailer park is. Well, maybe you can acquire that. So we spent money for them. So like when I hear, when I sit here and that boat launch is important to me, I'm a bowler. I'm a fisherman, I do recreational boating. I utilize both of those launches. But when I, when I hear, yep, we're going to do something with this, but there's not a clear plan what? That's very concerning to me. Because the plan that was presented the first time wasn't even feasible. It's in the region, it's in the two thousand five. They did an expansion for the parking, they did expansion of the boat launch. And, and wasn't something we could do because it wasn't even property we have. So when I see these plans, for one, if I had to pick one of these, it's definitely going to be the one with the least amount there, the second one. To have the least amount of impact. But not to have that additional plan when that was brought up. Those are big things that we need to focus on. And then are they being addressed? And not to have those answers and then like that, that's really troubling to me. And I agree, we need to have a financial plan. We need to be able to have a maintenance or replace that plan to make sure that this is feasible by then. Thank you.
Is there anything you can shed light on or anyone?
Yeah, a couple of things.
Sir, could he take the microphone for just a second? Thank you.
So I think a lot has probably changed in twenty two years since that time. And I think we probably know a lot more about the city and ownership and likely to the acquisition amount than we knew then. I fully acknowledge that, that that's, that's different as far as acquiring an end for the launch. By not designing a new launch, I hope, I don't want to, you know, give any indication that that's not an important part of the plan. We purposely stayed away from the launch. And the ideas for reconfiguring are, one, to provide a more clear path to launch boats. Two, to provide some additional parking at the launch. And three, to change the alignment. And that can be done in a lot of different ways in final design. But again, the focus was the layout of the facility. And, and none of the layouts here changed the small boat launch. So I just want to make clear on that. It's, it's the full intention to address that, but not part of the layout as far as these three concepts are concerned. So I just want to apologize for not looking at that. It wasn't part of the specific scope of this project, but I do think it's important. The other part was regarding the breakwaters. The rubble mountain breakwater, permanent, semi-permanent rubble mountain breakwater was the desired approach here. And in between two thousand and now, at some point, the permanent application was submitted. And a rubble mountain breakwater was not allowed by, I think it was the Army Corps, but it might have been DNR Army Corps in previous version of the deal. So floating breakwater is really the only option here. The floating breakwaters that there have lasted for a long time. I think those were the, the first floating breakwaters that I'm aware of, Lake Michigan marinas. So again, the performance of those has been sufficient. I think that a lot has changed in twenty two years. You learn a lot about those. Floating breakwaters are, are more commonly used now in situations like this, primarily because of regulatory concerns. So those are what I know. And I'd be happy to go through the two thousand report and look at it. But I think what we're trying to do here is, what is the direction to move forward? And as far as a preference for those that are here tonight, I just want to restate that any of these can be scaled back if that's what makes the most sense to the city. So don't get too hung up on sub numbers. Those are maximum sub numbers in most places.
Thank you. Bay West ten ninety six Lackview Road, Wayne City, very briefly. For making expenditure, I mean, I see this train coming down the hill. And I don't see any way to go to find breaks to it. If I'm going to be asked as a round voter to pay for a portion of this through my taxes, I simply ask for the right to cast my vote. And I don't think that that's an unreasonable thing. I think that in a community such as ours, we can't vote on every single topic. But on something that is so large and, and so expensive that you should give us the opportunity, those of us who are going to pay for eventually, the opportunity to vote. Thank you. Mike, you, could you explain a millage vote that would have to occur if it went to the taxpayers?
Well, it was a type of bonding that was required. My reflection is from when the city attorneys came and spoke to us about that before. If there was a type, the, the type of funding that had been proposed for this and previous marinas over the last number of years has been that the marina would be self-supported. There would not be any type of a general bond tax millage issue with regard to it. That the, any bonding that would take place would be dependent upon revenues generated by the revenue, by the marina to pay for itself. So the intent would be that it would not be on the general taxpayers. If we were going to, there, let me go further than there's always a provision that if for some reason the marina didn't come up with the money in a given year or a couple of years, like what happened in Roger City when they first built their marina a number of years ago, is they had to get, the city was on the hook for the money. And until the marina could pay them back, which it ultimately did, the city loaned them the money, but there wasn't any specific tax millage that went, an increase that went to it. Now, the city commission chose to basically say, like it was when you built this building, that this project is going to be funded primarily for, or with the intent that it's going to come directly from a specific millage that is levied and it's adjusted up or down, make sure that there is the amount of payments for that. Then that would go to a vote in people. That's why when this building was built, this building doesn't generate, you know, any significant revenue to pay for the bond on it itself. Tax revenues were necessary. The marina was considered to be different and has been different. That it pays for its basic operations and was going to be proposed by the number of slips and things of that nature to pay for the earlier bond proposals that were calculated earlier. We don't know if this would pay for it. It all depends on the number of slips, the interest rates that were talked about. We would have to have, once the commission, if we come up with a concept, I would recommend that we get them run and buy, have another financial analysis done to see if it can pay for itself. And then you're going to look at what type of funding mechanism you're going to use. But if there is something that requires a special, I mean, a specific millage, then that could go below the people.
Pat Ansel, one sixty one Anderson Way, lifetime resident, long-term taxpayer. Just like to applaud all the work that's been done this year and the last twenty years. Twenty years, if we're talking, it's been still twenty years in the past. I really hope in twenty years you're not back here. There's complaints that now it's a ten million dollar project and it probably isn't happening. Technology will change again. The docks again will be up to some based on codes and who knows what tech downs will be there. But we can keep kicking this can down the road, but I think it's time that we, we do something. It's obvious, obviously we need to do something just for improvements alone with expansion. It's something that has to happen. And I, I support the improvements and the expansion and preference for option three. And that's all I have, just wanted to say thank you all for your time and your work.
Anyone else? Okay, we can move then to admission deliberation. I'll choose the latter.
Sure. So we finally got here, we'll leave the consensus of a, a, a base, creative basis that everybody is, or in a lot of part agreed on and or disagreed with that. But at least we, I think what we did account, I was happy that we accomplished getting this far. My concern going forward, I mean, there was, there's been a few concerns, you know, tonight. So in, in looking at this as a broad scope, thankfully, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't know when we're going to bring the message. Twofold, I'm uh I'm not, I don't, I don't know when we're gonna bring the message, all of this into. So I mean, we had, we had uh um a firm look at the docks, look at rebuilding and re-rehabbing. Uh dock D refurbishing um and and doing repairs needed, which were minimal to the cost. No uh ill will toward you um. Uh like, but uh it it's uh, you you know, it just is uh. It. I agree, I'm I'm fine. I'm in your agreement that we need to do something with the agreement, like, you know. Five point two million is not what we need to do when we've got, we've we've got a quote to redo D dock, to put all the electric on it. Basically make it a brand new dock um for well less than uh less than three quarters of a million dollars. Um E dock, you know, we we talked about, I I I think this ends up needing to be built in phases. Um so we focus on redoing D dock for sure. He has to be done. Uh E dock was one thing that we talked about. That's that's some of the brand new build that we can use some of the grandly. Um and we don't tell that for sure, but that's quite an avenue that I would like to pursue um. And uh, you know, we talked, there's been a lot of conversation about the small launch. Um and uh and and we talked about it in the grand scheme and then it triples down and then. You know, again, it's it's here, but I think that's, you know, a big aspect that we need to look at. Um the uh as far as the um. So the other, the the enough, again, the numbers on the on on the B dock are right there. The uh as far as. Here's the crazy thing on on uh, you know, I had this fight the last time on the the numbers for paying for the last reports. They did, they weren't there. It didn't work. Uh I know there was people that wanted to argue that they did. But they were they were based on numbers that we that were projections out, not where we were and and everything. So granted, you're adding more slips, you're going to create more revenue. But it still wasn't enough to keep pace with even the last plan. And now, you know, we're. We're changing enough of that. That's why I'm saying that I think this thing needs to be done in phases. As far as right now, the marina to date, you know, this was, these were our numbers that, you know, were were given. Cause we're not given the exact uh rented uh numbers um and uh. But right now, to date, uh the the marina is is well into the red um and uh so. To say that we're that we're getting with it, we've got all this extra money that we could pour into paying for this, it is is just. Uh it's not there either and and um if anybody can see them, they're they're right on uh online, so. Um not not making any numbers up for you. Uh I so that's my my big feat. I I. If I, if if we're just picking a design that we wanna go with. I'm absolutely fine with going with uh, you know, three or or two. I I don't believe option one. Uh, you know, so one of the big things is, if if you're trying to play both sides, you know, uh of, you know. I hate boats, I love boats, then, you know, it should be, you know, accommodating to most boats. So I I guess I don't really see the need for uh the taxpayers to pay for an eighty foot boat. Um so that's where I would go with option two or option three. And the way that it is on on option one, it's not, it's not conducive. It's being an eighty foot boat slip to park a lot of local boats. And uh so where on option two and option three, you know, we've got, we've got bigger spaces, but you can accommodate, you know, smaller boats. So I'm fine with picking a plan that we that we can work with and and move forward if that's what we're doing. But, you know, as far as the numbers and everything, there's still way, way, way. We, I mean, it's just not even, it it, you know, it's not even close. And and part of it was, you know, part of it was, you know, the the. The hitch that we found in the get along even over the past year, you know, with uh the the marina showing more money. When technically it 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 should have shown less money because we worked back through all the costs into the marina. Uh mainly wages and everything like that. So there's, there's a lot of aspects in that that I I I don't uh. To to some of the points out here, you you know, may maybe uh uh maybe it does need to be a vote uh of of everyone. Because at that point in time, there there you go. Because we can't, we can't afford to pay for it, the way that it's laid out, period, period.
Uh Mike, could you kind of explain what you see the next steps being? Um how how, you know, so we so we improved the concept and I, how how do you see it moving forward? Just so we kind of got that clear on.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of steps that need to happen. Um I mean. Regulatory is one, and so there's, there's. An eagle permit and there's an army corps permit out there that hasn't expired yet. First thing is to come to a phase, say there's a change in the footprint or change in the layout within that footprint. And talk about what it would take to modify those permits. So if you can't modify the permits. Then you can't build it. Uh that's the first thing. Second part is to look at um. Well, taking a step back to your final layout, um you know, if there's any suggestions or or changes to layout that are that are seen to better fit a slip mix or whatever. Uh we're here to do that. And then then financial, of course, that's the part that we've been talking about for at least the last two years I've been heavily involved. And I think a good way to do that, if we can, if we can select a direction, that's really what this is. It's not necessarily a plan, but direction. Say that we're gonna move forward to alternate three, that direction, maybe not that number of slips, but that general form of layout. To to involve Baker Tilly. To do an analysis of how the finances are gonna work with the forty five slips. And then maybe to reduce that by twenty five percent and do an analysis of what that looks like. To say, is eighty five slips the right size or or does it look like if we had less slips? And just to to get a feel for how that's gonna affect things long term. Of course, that's gonna affect the outcome capital, but it's gonna also affect the long-term revenue. And the ability to pay for uh things down the line. So I think those are the biggest important things and then phasing is part of it too. So what are the next logical phases I see really? Um just looking at it earlier today, two good ways to do an initial phase, if indeed we're gonna do it in a base direction. And that's, I've always anticipated that that's how it would be done, but. You know, that's certainly up to the city, of course.
Yeah, I uh I I think a base in the very idea um. Right now, I'm thinking if we don't do something. To replace or rehab D dock, uh we're gonna do that like you guys. Of course, we're already looking at the summers. In a few days and next thing you know, it's gonna be summer again. And if we don't get D docks, we're gonna be up and running electrical. That's gonna hurt us again. So I like the idea of the phase thing. Um I actually would have a problem if. Flotation docks that just came in and rehab D dock, bringing back up co-electrically and got the electrical back working and. And brought some new life back into that, if that's feasible for them to do. Um I think there's a good first step in the phase, you know, the uh structure's already there and the T dock on. On V, you know, we could add on uh. That section that's on, I like proposal two. For that, it's already there. A lot of the stuff's already there. So I think phases, to me, is a common sense way to do this. It's gonna be affordable and doable along that.
Question before I make a statement, uh can you explain phasing, Mike? If um financially phasing, can you, if you did, as George adjusted. Is there monies out there just to do? Pay it to get the electrical on that dock?
Yeah, the city has the two uh two grants from the waterways uh grant program. And one of the two grants was actually to upgrade uh electrical systems and utility systems. And I get the impression that I know that there's been other conversations with the waterways, but. That if there's a, if there's an overall direction and need to combine those two grants to do something meaningful for a first phase, I think that would be. An option. And that'd be something to explore uh with waterways. But I think, you know, we're talking a lot about D dock, which is the existing dock here. And all three of these plans that are very similar to D dock as part of the plan, because it just makes sense based on the layout of the basin. That dock could be maybe a first phase or a portion of that dock could be a first phase. What I just would discourage is spending a lot of money on rehabbing utilities and then dock knowing you're gonna have to replace that dock. That's the thing that I think that would be wise to avoid in history.
So follow up on that. We, the bid that we have to basically rehab and current docks, you would not recommend?
I think uh that, I think the bid that I saw was actually to replace the dock in place. Um and that bid included plumbing. Uh but it did not include the electrical, and that's a big chunk of the cost, just to point that out. You know, I think there's something in the three hundred thousand range to replace the dock. It doesn't do upwind fully work or the end dock electrical, so that's gonna, that's gonna bump it right back up to where we estimate.
So so basically, yeah, I mean, like. New, building new with all the utilities makes more sense than.
Right, and or a portion of it. If there's a target number, you build that portion of it.
Well, let me summarize my feelings and and some of this is repetitive, but um. I think it's time that we improve this marina plan tonight. So that we can move forward as a community. The the design. Maybe you can see, want to, we missed the task that was assigned to us. In the spirit of defining what we individually considered the marina boundary. And in the spirit of compromise, we we believe forward, us five commissioners, method our boundary. Our boundary lines were very similar. Penny representing, we the people also do a ground boundary line that was also very similar to ours. We took those boundary drawings to Evan Marsh with the request to come up with three designs. Marty suggested one design and we have agreed. It's one design, it's the option. It's forced tonight with minor options. Our next step, our next report is to move forward with Evan Harsh. And other financial experts to explore all options to pay for the project. I agree with everybody here. We can't afford five point two. But we have to go through this step. So that we can get to the next step of coming up with a financial plan. This hopefully includes federal and state grant lines. That's what we were depending on a lot years ago. I want to continue the practice of our marina not relying on general funds for rational drops. Marty, I already discussed this. The 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 salary should not include it, but Marty, but generally speaking, general funds was not used for the brain of mine. I want to give you that. Related to this, is examining our fee schedule for marina slips and addressing a line item for short-term, long-term repair and maintenance. But first things first, tonight, prove the design. That's what is before us. Then we have an agreed upon design to move forward to explore the next phases. Why is the marina important, Point City? I've heard all the talk, marina is only for the rich people, the tourists. And then us commissioners only cater to them. I disagree a hundred percent. The marina is an economic engine for our local economy. We have hundreds of locals who work downtown on our retail and hospitality businesses. We have hundreds of locals who work in the voting industry with sales, repair, maintenance, storage, docks. And so for a strong marina, supports the voting industry, which gives locals good jobs. A vibrant marina contributes towards a vibrant, local downtown economy. I might add that locals would fit a significant proportion of the marina users. Including the eighty five names of people who are waiting for a slip. People have been on slips for fifteen years. Our marina is currently not big enough to accommodate the demand. If we replace forty four slips, as some suggest, within a given footprint, we do not solve any problems. We still only have revenue from the forty four slips, have not addressed the waiting list. Not expanded economic opportunity. Let's say we scale down to sixty slips. If we build sixty slips, the same dilemma exists. We increase revenue and decrease the waiting list minimally. We've gone from forty four to say approximately sixty, we need fifteen slips. What makes sense to me is to maximize the slips. Still within the given boundary. That would include. From seventy eight to eighty five. I don't care. Eighty five makes more sense to me personally. But by maximizing to eighty five slips, we maximize the revenue for even more slips for the waiting list. And create promotion opportunity for helping the downtown businesses and the voting industry. This issue that we all have agreed has split our community at heart. Our community has come together over the years to build a new school and a new football, recently a new field house, a remodel middle school. We have come together to build a new city hall and an EPW building. We've come together to build a new trail, cycle. Playground from the dog park. We have approved the pavilion, the city bathrooms, the open space, pickleball courts, baseball and softball. We have community groups building a field of dreams, a skate park, and a new pavilion, a new slash bed. I asked, why can't we come together as a community and build a much needed new marina, new marina? The answer, we can. In the spirit of compromise, cooperation and community, I asked the hell commissioner to vote to endorse the marina plan as presented. One of these. And then our citizens support our game plan so that we can move forward and get the answers. Third year to the next phase financially, phasing. So using our turn, our current grants, answering. We have to move forward. Too long with issue and our community is divided. And it's time to move forward.
So I'm gonna just read through, this is the flotation documents that can report that each one of the commissioners received. Um it's not in our agenda packet. I feel it should be in the agenda packet. Um it hasn't been given, or I feel this information needs to be made available to the public uh soon as possible. Um and essentially just to bring context in it, because it was referenced by a few other commissioners um. They, this company came out, did a survey of our marina um and evaluated the condition of our marina. Uh Arvin Mach has a copy of this as well and they were given a copy of it. Um but I just wanna point out some things. So as you read through this, um. There's several points in here and I'll just go through the terminology. Um unfortunately, the head period's condition is notably worse, the lower skin being absent hanging along the entire dock. It its upper layer hasn't reached a critical state yet, but is beginning to rust and deform at numerous locations. When the material begins to fail and increased risk exists for additional damage from boats and wave impact. Additionally, muskrats are attracted to exposed. Polyester for nesting purposes, which can create a large mess of foam beads along your shoreline. Considering this dock has now completed its thirty year service. And was originally designed with an approximate twenty five year useful life expectancy. We feel you should budget for full replacement in the near future. We feel you should budget for full replacement in the near future. That said, I've noted two immediate maintenance needs. Um and those are linked. So you go to the next page and the terminology that jumps out again is total price for these critical repairs. Um so they're identifying additional critical repairs in another section of our Marina out there on D dock. Going on to the E section, E dock section, the launch gram dock. Um FDS has evaluated the structure on several occasions and determined it must be fully replaced, although we've completed a number of Band-Aid fixes. In recent years, we are no longer willing to do so as a result of the implied liability. Um so basically, they have done multiple repairs over the years on dock E and they're unwilling to do these Band-Aid repairs due to implied liability there. Moving on to another dock section. Um these concerns should be addressed immediately as a section to section attachments are residing in a compromised state, especially where the broken pin is present. If SBS were to undertake the repairs, but again identifying those crucial repairs that are needed there. So we've been going through this report, um and hearing meeting after meeting, um our Marina needs huge attention. Um and the terminology we use again tonight as far as kicking the can down the road. So I would just, I sit and I think how many other commissioners have had the opportunity to be impactful, um with making sure we're not in the state that we're in right now. Um and so tonight, I wholeheartedly hope this commission can come to a finding of progress and finding a way to doing what's right for the community. Um and doing what's right for the community is obviously making sure that uh these repairs and these liabilities and these risk factors are minimized. I mean, that's good leadership. And I don't know why it's failed for twenty years. I don't know why it's failed with X amount of different leaders in the roles. Um I'm here now on this board. These commissioners are here now on this board. Um and so that kind of brings me down to where I, I'll just summarize kind of where I'm at now because I just wanna identify that. There, there's a crucial need. Um and kicking the can is not an option, I think, um as far as what we should be doing as leaders here. Um so with that being said, I feel at the end of the night, we need to find a concept here that the majority of this commission agrees on. So then we can move forward to the next step of finding out the financing on it. If we as a commission find a concept that we agree on and kind of the discussion that goes in there, um I honestly, I'm all in favor of i- if, if there's a commissioner here that wants to say this one and we can find the majority, I can fall in line to make sure that um we're being good leaders and we're finding progress tonight at the end of the day. Um but I understand the whole, the, the favor design three, it has the largest amount of slip capacity, but to combat that, it does have this, the most um smallest slip capacity as far as, so if you start breaking down these different concepts at the bottom, you'll see a chart of slip length and the amount of density for that slip length. So we as a community, we have a large waiting list for small slips. Um so if we went with concept one for twenty-five foot slip, we're only having seventeen slips available. Um if we went with concept two for twenty-five slips, we would have eighteen slips available. Concept three for twenty-five slips, we would have twenty slips available, um which would, that's that, that makes sense, right? We would be identifying impacting, making an impactful result on the waiting list there. Um so that's what I feel we need to do as a commission is find a concept where we can move forward. Finding a concept does not mean we have a new Marina that's starting groundbreaking December first here. Um finding a concept means we can go to the next stage of finding how do we finance this. Um and I'll say this again. I, I have said it for a year. I believe this should be a vote for the people. How do we get there? I've been told as a commissioner, I've been told before I was a commissioner that it's not an option. I've been told as a commissioner that it is not an option. I've had attorneys tell me that it's not an option. I've challenged attorneys on here during the commission meetings and we find out that it can help. So there's a way we can get to that point. Um and it would be interesting to see how we can make that work because at the end of the day, um I think that would be what's great for the community. Um I believe strongly and a solid financial preventative maintenance because at the end, one thing I gotta highlight out, the very last page of this report, the last section is finally, I feel it's appropriate to address the need for more frequent mon- monitoring, monitoring of the dock. Issues such as that'll bug main dock, broke, broken, broken, broken wave art to new areas, connections and shared shock shocker dock knee brace can easily be identified during basic visual inspections. Um so I, I feel we can do better as leaders on how we're preventively maintaining our assets in the community. Um it's sad to see that we're pushing thirty some years on a twenty-five meter life expectancy um with this structures down there. Um I support a phase, phase in this planning, like phase building and I talked to Mike at the beginning of tonight. He came a little early, so each commissioner had an opportunity. And so asking him, okay, Mike, if we find a concept tonight, we go through the finances, we want, and we get to the point where um we're moving forward with this, how does he see this project happening? And the, the framing of that conversation essentially is there's a benefit and this, there's an advantage and disadvantage of phasing to an extent. Um when you, when you, if this five point three million dollar construction project, you, when you have to start splitting up the logistics, when you have to start splitting up your, you're going to increase your expenses essentially when you do a phasing portion um versus doing it more of a one at all. Um so getting his experience and his knowledge of, okay, if we're gonna phase this out, what does that do to our increased expense line analytically? Okay, does it be set to go to phasing knowing it's in a cost more of an expense line? Um because right now we're struggling to figure out, can we afford the five point three million dollars? Um so he gave feedback on, yes, it is going to increase your expense line to a degree. Um legitimately, um and, but we don't know what that looks like until we find a concept and we get to that financing portion. Um so I support, I've heard phasing from all four commissioners. I'm right there with you. I would just caution us that that will impact our expenses there. Um. A lot of things that have been brought up tonight and in the past, I agree wholeheartedly with fishing, I, I feel, and I, there's so many policy issues um that I think we as commissioners need to start saying, this is a policy issue as leaders, we need to identify um issues with fishing, whether kids can be out on the docks and fishing on the dock or whether they're being chased off from a public dock um that's owned and maintained publicly. Um I have, you know, concerns that I think we can address these policy issues, but we shouldn't be allowing policy issues to extend another two years on a thirty year Marina that's equated for twenty-five years of life expectancy. Um I don't think that's where we should be holding up um progress here essentially. Um. So that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, I got several things written down. Um but at the end of the night, I think we as commissioners need to find one of these concepts and moving forward and the, the FDS thing, so like when, so breaking it down here uh for D dock, they, they say that they can replace our D dock for two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, nine, 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 nine hundred dollars. Um as Mike from Arvin, Arvin Maj pointed out, that doesn't include the, the electric, the landslide electric there. Um but breaking down their cost per square footage is seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. They didn't break it down, but you can easily break it down with some simple math. And then Arvin Maj's is, I don't have the, it's sixty-six dollars if I remember right. Yeah, six, six, six dollars. So looking at what FDS says that they can do from the removal of the docking to the repairing of the docking, they're actually at a higher margin level than what Arvin Maj is. Once you start breaking it down and comparing apples to apples, um which is interesting. Um and I think it's, that needs to be brought into the financing conversation again, but I don't, that's all irrelevant at this point. We just have to really focus on where we move forward, what concept is most favorable and let's get in motion and move forward.
Uh yeah, I agree, you know, physical concepts, so I, I, I support concept three. The other thing that's literally to the commissioners is I think we have to get the numbers, real numbers that we all believe in as far as the rest of the expenses for the last year, the power and it at the Marina. Cause I would hate to have this rush into uh replacing it at a cost that uh is gonna be far greater than seven or eight thousand dollars that maybe we ran in the hole on this particular year. Uh but I think we need to move forward in concept three. We need to give Evan Marshall the opportunity then to uh do the, well, we need the financial review and auxiliary.
Big or tell.
Big, big utility is the finance company that we used in the past, correct? Uh and then phasing, but like Evan Marshall before with this, um you know, step by step, I don't know what step comes first. I guess you mentioned getting the permits. We need to talk to the state about the grants, whether or not what we're doing here is going to be that, what they were expecting us to do as far as expansion and then getting to the, of the phasing. We do not have five point eight million dollars to build a Marina. We're gonna have to be very creative about this. So it's gonna have to be phasing or we would go to a vote with people, much like we've built and say that we are gonna ask you to spend a hundred dollars a year for twenty years, pay for a Marina. And that's when it would come down to a vote that matters. I don't think going to a vote and just asking you support expansion or no expansion is, is gonna do anything for us. So uh I, I think we need to vote with people in common, on concept three, we're all in general agreement, I keep with concept two. And uh we ready for motion?
Marty's got a question. I, I, I do have an additional question. The, the biggest thing is we just keep ignoring the element in the room though, we have that all year long. And that's the fact that D dock is going anywhere. We just had somebody that was on D dock. And you, you know, that's why I'm saying the phase aspect. And I thought Tim was going in a different direction. So again, no offense to you, Mike, but you know, then I wanna see, I, I wanna see your numbers of flotation dock system because in all those numbers, even using Mike's numbers, you know, for the electrical, which we already had those ballpark numbers. Um it, it is half of the cost of what's being proposed in here for D dock. So six and a quarter, six and a quarter, we can rebuild D dock. That's, that's the number we have right here. And, and, and I mean, so my problem is, I've got no problem with the concept. We've got a huge element out there right now. That if we don't, if we don't make a decision now, if we just keep playing this going, and I'm not saying we're playing. I'll take that word back, but if we just keep doing the steps, doing, you know, okay, we're gonna send it back, we're gonna get some more numbers and whatever, we're gonna look at it and everything like that. We're gonna be, we're gonna be February before we decide on a, on a decision. And that's too long for D dock. We were told that we couldn't make that decision past September, October. Well, it's now the end of November. So that's my concern. I, I, I'm fine with what you said. I'm fine with, I'm fine with looking at that. I'm happy with this mission that, you know, and everybody in this room that came to a concept that we're gonna live within this Marina base. But if, you know, I, I, we gotta do something on D dock. We either, either we gotta do the Band-Aid repair and get in and put that in place and we're probably pretty fast or, or time. The electrician to send that and send that and send that. I need to order those because they're, you know, thirty some weeks out. Well, thirty some weeks out doesn't hurt even now, which you in a dock. So that's my frustration.
Well, uh, the way I, I look at it differently than you do, what I'm looking at is the fact that we're gonna rush in and do a repair for a hundred thousand.
That wasn't, well, that wasn't repair, that was a brand new dock.
Well, it's gonna be, we're gonna, well, then we, Mike, can you answer the question? I mean, all of a sudden, flotation dock prices come up here and I have not studied that. What?
Not all of a sudden.
I've got, for two of us. It was not part of the package that we were talking about with the Marina.
I got that. Ten thirteen, yeah, ten thirteen, twenty-two. I said two, sorry, I'm on the.
Can you, can you address the flotation dock at all as far as what these numbers are that we're looking at and that we should have Marty's point that if we need to consider those sort of things?
Yeah, I think uh the numbers that flotation dock provided are consistent with, I mean, what we're used to seeing. And actually, flotation dock is a company that makes stocks throughout the state of Michigan. They're, the way that they make them is fantastic for pretoria ice, which is a major differentiator that we have at East Coast and like Florida doesn't have, for instance. Um their numbers, like we said, doesn't include electric. So in order to address the issue on a D dock, there's still really two choices there. And I think, I think flotation's numbers were to replace D dock. It was to take it out how it is now and put it back into the same configuration. And in all these concepts of a D dock, that's not too far from that. So I think we're all talking about the same number. It's probably a, you know, just same range that was in our estimate, it's gonna be in that ballpark. That is out there for.
Well, I guess.
Uh I guess Marty, what I'm trying to understand, are you worried about the loss of payment? We don't have power on even that song.
Oh yeah, sorry, I'm rude.
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily believe, okay, I wanted to have, you know, do the thing online.
I, I didn't turn on.
Well, I, I, I'm just saying, I think there's a much bigger review. I, I'm not, it may be worth, it's been worth being shown. Okay.
If you was in heaven. I just, if Mike could entertain and just walk me through because there, it's hard to compare these and I had to do some final homework and that's where I came up with that score, which costs a seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. Your guys is that sixty-six dollars. And looking at their removal expense, they're charging us twenty-seven thousand dollars to, for just the removal of that. Where you guys are charging us twenty-five thousand dollars, so that's a two thousand dollar difference there with them being higher on that end too. And then at the back end in the small printing, like the small print here, it says, no, all disposal options require the city to order one or two, depending on disposal scope. Thirty yard dumpster for hallway of small items. This would presumably be provided at no cost to FDS. Essentially saying that we would take that bill. So realistically, their twenty-seven thousand dollar charge for removal is actually higher than that. Um question mark on what that expense would be.
And, and just to be clear, for those that may not know, we don't do any of this work. We're just engineering consulting and nobody can cross that way. These are just our estimates of what, what we think that ballpark cost is gonna be. So the removal of the existing D dock, we estimated that, what did you just say, fifteen?
It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand, Chris. We got twenty-five and they had something similar.
So um and this is a concept process, you know, I think when you you took their bulk to replace D dock and you had it in our electrical cost that we estimated.
Right, so that's.
I think they're gonna be pretty close.
Right, so can you just walk me through like your numbers that you gave us? So that would be line item, landslide water service to D dock, gangway, thirty-five thousand dollars?
Correct, and that's just for those people in water side service, that's thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
There's gonna be a mobilization and general conditions portion of those two that's gonna be related to D dock, it could be there either.
Right.
Some portion of the two big numbers beginning. Uh we also have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for its service from the new main distribution panel to the D dock gangway. And that's for a hundred and seventy-five, that's a long sum, a lot of assumptions built in there.
So that one, a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus that thirty-five thousand is not in this, right?
Correct.
In that two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Correct. It's not in quotation back in the other part. In the D dock section of our estimate, uh there's several lines that pertain to electric, uh utilities within dock at one hundred and seventy-five.
What line item is that?
Uh I don't have the reason to say it and have it from now, but it's the let's see, about the tenth item down, the utilities.
Okay.
So that's for the piping in the dock, the conductors that are in the dock. And then the work is gonna be done, put that in. Utility houses, twenty, twenty-one, the conduct to two thousand five hundred. And then uh we have fire ext. And then uh, we have fire extinguishers with cabinets. There needs to be three of those on that dock based on the lane.
Right.
And then fire protection, one more, some of twenty five thousand. I believe flotation docking systems does include the. The stand pipe, the fire protection.
Does include, yes, but not the extinguishers with the cabinet, which would be a six thousand dollar.
Correct. So I think when you have things that are not in there, we're in a. If you, if you add things that are in our estimate and are not in there, we're gonna be pretty close.
Right. But that's something that we can, like I said, that's something I think we can get to and figure out. I mean, the numbers are there.
Well, 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 well then, and that's my question. And, and with the one thing you're leaving out, the biggest reason that you can't balance the numbers is because of thirty five. Percent contingents, you know, which is here. So that's another aspect of it. But I guess all I'm saying is that we've got, we've got to make a decision on D dock. We, we can sit here and say, sure, number three, that's a wonderful idea.
I don't think we need to make a decision on D dock. We're sure to serve, I mean, they're gonna make a statement.
I would make the statement if, if we're, if I, all I'm suggesting is that we get.
Numbers that we all can be living eleven hundred expense for the last year on the, on the marina. How much of a hit we took, what hit we can anticipate is we don't have power, electric and beam next summer. Why you pull it on that to make a good long-term decision? That's what I'm thinking. So I entertain a motion. Before at that point. I'll make a motion to move forward with the, in the city staff, this election of uh, kind of a number phrase. Of the plan of the board to do it, Marina to move forward.
Any more now?
Mike, is it fair to ask you what kind of timeline we could anticipate having like these. Preliminary things completed. That would be the permitting. The conversations with this uh, in uh, department after the resource of the grant. And some preliminary information from Baker Tilly, I guess that would be more presiding energy uh. Now, can you give some idea how long that might take?
I'm comfortable committing to making the phone calls for the waterways grant. If not tomorrow, the week after Thanksgiving, the thing I wanna get back. Uh, I'm happy to call Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle. To ask about regulatory feasibility. That's gonna be a little bit of a process. That's, that always takes some time. Meaning months, um, if not longer. Uh, so those two, I'm happy to commit to making those phone calls really quickly here and getting feedback. Um, with regard to the financial analysis. Will provide support uh, as needed. Whether that be. You know, looking at occupancy and the city's rates and coming up with a, some kind of an annual projection of revenue. And then Baker Tilly can run the, the financial numbers.
Would you also recommend to us? All the grants that are available?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, just to let you know that. I've been communicating with Baker Tilly to let them know where we are in this process. We had an email back from uh. Andy Campbell from them, in fact, just this morning, basically saying that uh, they're basically prepared to go. But they needed us to come up with a concept. He, he was pretty much in agreement with the uh, process that we're going through. That once it comes up with, that's the best time to get them back. I think they're pretty much lined up, but we can contact them once the commission makes a decision and get some timelines for that as well.
So Jessica, can you give us a motion?
What I have is recommending to city staff, I'll learn about the phrase move forward.
Are, is the commission comfortable about the time? First of all, we need to second. Uh, are you comfortable with the timeline? Uh, so we're looking at a few months. What are some of the answers? We made or other issues soon than that.
I'm thinking at the very least, we have our next city commission meeting is December thirteenth. There isn't any reason we can't provide a report back as to what information we've gotten. Had some more specific timelines for you at that point at the very least.
Could we have the budget numbers too that we, we, we have confidence in the?
Whether you'll have confidence or not, it'll be your ultimate decision, but yes, we'll get you good numbers.
Uh, the only other thing is I would like to have city administration make sure that this information gets put on the city website. For the public. And I don't know if the commission agrees on that or what, but.
All the information, okay.
Right. I think it's pretty relevant.
Is, is that a motion that the commission needs? I mean, is, is.
I just heard a consensus with the commission. Can I, can I ask my question one more time to your, and maybe have you, I'm not, I'm not saying anything other than. So on D dock, I said, if we, if, if we, if he gives us a number and quotation dock gives us a number. In the next month to build it brand new. There we got apples to apples, and then we can try at least add it up, the game a little bit. And by all numbers. Being pointed here, that's. We already, we already know we have the electrical grid, correct? That was the D dock. That one can't be revoked, you said, you said. The grant that was received for electrical was basically land side. Correct. I understand. I got that, but that was large, that was a large sum of money. Yep. Three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Twenty seven, thank you. Uh, so now you've got numbers. Less than a million dollars minus three hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, can at least get our Marina back up and running. That's all I'm asking. I'm hoping. Again, one of the comments that Mike's mentioned is following up with uh, our grant coordinator from the state with regards to that. And there isn't any reason we can't follow up on that, hopefully get some feedback on that in advance.
Jessica, will you? So, um, I am. Eight B, I heard all busy. So item B is ball curving removal and stump branding contract regulation with your supplemental. Instead of the recommendation, considering Michael Kane who awarded tips all aspects for. Avoiding city with free trimming removal.
At our last commission meeting, uh, this matter was closed phone for additional information. Uh, we've gotten our price estimate, or excuse me, what we're actually awarded uh, for uh, pre-removal projects from twenty uh, fifteen. Through twenty twenty two, uh, we provided the information, which included the number of vendors that we had, the total number of trees. That were involved, how many were cut, how many were trimmed, where we had that information. Whether it involved right-of-way trees or cemetery trees, and then the total progress. You can see that the prices range from a high in twenty twenty for right-of-way trees of forty three thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. Uh, the low uh, was in twenty eighteen when only cemetery trees were removed at a cost of eighty five hundred dollars. Um. I, it wasn't reflected clearly in the last memo that went before the city commission. That the proposal for uh, this coming year was for forty two trees. Which included both right-of-way trees along, uh, trees along the roads and on other public property. And trees in the cemetery. Uh, the cemetery fund, in addition to the monies that are budgeted. In the made by the street funds has ten thousand dollars budgeted. So we have more than sufficient funds in the twenty eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to do it. And you can see for most of the years going back to twenty fifteen, we had only one vendor that bid on it and it was uh, all aspects. We did in twenty eighteen have vendors uh, that bid on it, but for the cemetery process. Anything, anything I can answer on that or the other information you'd like, I'd be glad to. Do what I can do for you.
Uh, any questions or comments in the public?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Katie Richard, five twenty six, Lincoln. I would just ask one thing as far as these tree trimming folks. Um, I lived here for five years. They came two years ago, I think it was. Um, and did the, the right away. And all can tree, they trimmed the branches above the wire. Not below the wire. Just a point. So somebody needs to go behind and do a quality of life check because they did. Above the power lines instead of below, those were the ranch there.
And you're not, I'm not sure this is the correct answer, but we had trees trimmed on our property. It wasn't the city, it was consumers protecting your power line. So I think that, and that was about five years ago. So I think that's why I trimmed them when we did.
This was the one that was, within the last year or two, when they hung tags. On the door and it was the same resource that we.
It, it might have been, I said, is that, is that in our neighborhood? You heard my.
Down my way, yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was.
We got the time, yeah.
Anyone else? No, I, I'm not happy with.
Yeah, it's a no brainer. Um, appreciate that.
I entertain a motion to approve the contract for.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, the contract. And award the bid to be the all aspect forestry of Boring City for true trimming removal and sub grounding the estimate about twenty eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second? Any more to say? Jessica, will you? Thank you. Moving on, we have nine days to do this. Twenty twenty two transit rate recommendation to that grant warrant for Marina.
Well, Donna was hoping to be here for this one. She just started her new job today and she had a meeting uh, out on the west coast, uh, Zoom meeting. So she apologizes for not being here. Uh, she and her team did a lot of research with regards to uh, rates. Uh, we are required to set our rates uh, pretty much now uh, with the state for our transit rates. Uh, so they can get them out on the, uh, of other reservation system. Um. And she compared and looked at other marinas in the area, ours along with uh, uh, Charlevoys and East Jordans. Um, and talks about what types of boats that are preferred there. Generally, she references the twenty five foot underboats. Uh, they looked at uh, the public marinas in the area and felt that um. Uh, our, the, the transit rates that some of the other ones have. Um, uh, from June sixteenth uh, to Labor Day peak season. That are lower than others and then higher in the off-seasons, which are uh. Just like she defines as May fifteenth to June fifteenth as an early season and September fifth, October fifteenth as a late season. Uh, she did a lot of research looking at our occupancy percentages and daily uh, transit rates for this last season. And uh, she provides another observation, a number of observations that are noted in the bullet points. Um, again, she says that no two marinas are the same. They all have their unique and, and then. Amenities, which makes it difficult to compare and contrast. Uh, she notes that many marinas in the area leverage transit rates that are posted annually uh, uh. By the D N R and those are included on the attached page. Um, that the, the D N R, as they've done frequently in the past, is proposing no rate increases for the coming year. Uh, obviously, we know that there's been cost increases, but they're not proposing any rate increases of this. Coming year. Um, there was a significant, there is a significant occupancy uh, in the. In rates. Uh, of occupancy rate in the early season and in the late season. Uh, that we've posted a single price category F. Uh, for the twenty twenty two voting season, and I don't recall ever during my twenty years here with the city. That we've ever had a fluctuating rate that changed for transient during the seasons. Uh, we have done things providing like uh, the commission has approved in the past. You know, giving the harbor master the ability to offer special pricing and things of that nature at the end of the season. Uh, and we've used that at some times, but we've never really. Parred or timed our rates to really reflect uh, the uh, traffic that is going on throughout the year. Um. During our peak uh, season, our occupancy has been greater than ninety percent. Uh. She, she's talked, uh, it's mentioned that uh, Potowski had a category, a leverage category F for transient rates. Uh, and Charlevoix used three seasonal rates of B, I, and H for different periods of the season. Uh, Harbor Springs had a single rate, uh, which is the I rate. And uh, East Jordan had a single price category E. Um, again, she talks about the timeline on this, that the, the submission is due to the uh, state. By December nineteenth, obviously, we do have our December thirteenth meeting. So if the commission wanted to take some time. Ponder this further, we can do it. We're not having to do it at this time. But based on her analysis and uh, looking at all the various factors that she learned about the marina in the uh. The months that she was with us, she's recommending that we try something different. And go to a tiered rate system. Where in the early season, we would use category rate B, which is significantly less than what we do now. Do that same thing in the late season, which starts uh, basically after Labor Day, put in the category rate B. So it would give people. Early in the season and late in the season, which is primarily and really appeals mostly. The people that are in the area already, to some of our local customers. Uh, to use it and giving them a lower price to do it, and hopefully by encouraging more people to use it by coming at a low rate. That might actually generate some additional revenue. Um, but then during the peak season, uh, June sixteenth through September fourth. Go with the, the uh, higher rate of H when we do have the most of our demand, when people are, you know. Even in our condition of our arena, the way it is now, there is, I mean, there is just a lack of capacity for people to put uh. Boats on uh, places to park. Um. Again, she talks about uh, some of the rationale behind uh, going with this. Uh, lower rates could be leveraged to encourage polar occupancy. Uh, we will have uh, lower rates that are entered and published into the reservation system. And available to everyone to reserve as soon as the, the window opens. So rather than us just having something which is kind of word of mouth or the, the harbor minister is able to basically offer it. Depending on what that person saw, these rates. In, in the early and late season, be advertised basically worldwide. And everybody would have the opportunity to take advantage of them. Uh, she believes, and I agree with her, that I think a lot of the transient in those early seasons or in the late season, the late season in particular. Things, a lot of people have gone home, but it's still like voting weather, I think would encourage a lot of locals to potentially use. Uh, our marina that might not be doing it now at the higher rates. Um. And again, uh, the proposal is to increase rates for the peak season. As uh, where the occupancy rates are tending, uh, trending higher already. And rates are still significantly low, much, much lower than the private marinas in uh, close proximity to us. So. If they don't wanna go here, and again, we've got some challenges with this, this coming year, as we did this last season. There just aren't that many other places for them to go, and there certainly aren't gonna be that in other places to go where it's gonna be cheaper, especially if they're looking into private. Our rates are so much cheaper. Anybody, the public rates are so much cheaper than the private. So we're recommending that we go with a higher rates. Anybody, the public rates are so much cheaper than private. So we're recommending that we go with a higher rates on that. Um. There are some assumptions that are in here. I'm not sure if I agree with all of them uh with regards to, you know, the timing of the electrical and things of that nature. I think we're gonna have to. Really, I think we're gonna be struggling to make that happen to be candid with uh something. Um, the whole rate schedule is, is shown here. Again, A is the lower rates. We've been at F. Uh, she's proposing and we're proposing uh. B rates for the early and late season. So you can see how much lower those are than the F rates. Uh, for a twenty eight foot or twenty five foot boat length is uh twenty two dollars. B, um, it's currently thirty seven dollars under F. And um for our higher season, we would bump it up to forty four dollars under H. So even though the D N R is raising rates per category. We have the ability to increase our revenue by moving to a different category. Uh, and we think it would still work. So, um. And then she provided some information with regards to the harbor transit. Uh, rates, the, the activities that we've had uh in the marina at different times over uh. Different years um as background information for it. So our recommendation is that we try something new um and see how it works out. And approve the transient rates as recommended with the three tiers, the early season, the rate at B. Uh, the prime season at H and the late season back to B. And uh have city staff submit those rates to the D N R and have them enter into their reservation system, which is called GAS. I'd be glad to try and address any questions that the commission might have on that.
Okay. Uh, any questions in the audience? Guys?
Pete Friedrich, four one five High Street. First of all, like the command and commissioners are tackling Marina's tough job. You guys did it. You took this white thing and brought it down with something actually. Nice job. On pricing, um, as everybody knows, when you travel. Uh, there's a thing called dynamic pricing. It's used at hotels, it's used airlines, it's used to golf courses. Uh, the prime season is always the most. I was too far back to read the headline. Maybe there's a suggestion the first two weeks of July, which includes both the July, maybe bump it up another category. I think that would be worthwhile, generating more income. What I'm proposing tonight is there a way that you can add a flat fee for maintenance to every slip? Two dollars, five dollars, three dollars for every time someone has that, like that maintenance fee goes into a pool that takes care of the marina. For repairs, we don't get in the situation that we're getting into today. Thank you.
Might need to put you on the spot, but do you know any kind of uh rate system like that, where you can have maintenance fee added to the. When I have the charge in G S. Or the D N R? That's.
I haven't seen that done, but I think it's a great idea. And I, I was talking with a couple of commissioners before the meeting and I separately and. I feel myself that transient rates throughout the state. Uh, need to be higher in order to maintain these facilities with the way the costs are now. So I, I think any way you can capture that and explain what the board is going to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, huh? Do you want to start or is there? Yeah, the only thing I worry about is assumption that electrical will be restored and that bumps it right back down to. I don't take the charge. Top rate for a diamond one, I think. Um, following up on Pete's suggestion, I think it's a great idea. Could it be done in some form of a local tax? So you rent a marina slip, you're paying a local one percent tax or something. So it has really. We're not tied in with the D N R, we're tied in with local taxation. So. That would be something that I think staff could explore. I think it's a great idea. Um. But I, I'm all in favor of this. I'm in favor of fluctuation for high season, the low season. Most worries, got worried about charging top dollar.
Um. And I was one of the commissioners that met with Mike before the meeting and specifically went through this with him. Um, looking at the material, the analytics that has been provided with the memo, um. I can't draw the conclusion of what that memo is intent is here. So from May fifteenth to June fifteenth, we're dropping down four categories. During peak season, we will go up two categories. And then during late season, we're going to drop down another four categories than what we have now. Um, and then, so we have this transient occupancy comparison chart. I understand the intent. Here, um, but I think there's more information to be gathered to really be able to intuitively support this. Um. It goes back to twenty twenty, our early season, we had thirteen point thirty three percent occupancy rate. What was Charlotte Boys occupancy rate that same year? Um, what was East Jordan's? Was it a hard winter that just didn't want to let go and people weren't wanting to fill slips and go out on a boat? Um, I can't, I can't decipher that um from this. So I understand. I'm just cautious on that dropping down four categories. I feel there might be a little bit more information or maybe reaching out to Charlotte Boy and looking at, you know, let's. Get their transient occupancy comparison comparable chart for those three years and see if we're in line or out of line.
So you would suggest taking this and get more, get more information?
I would support the, I would support the increase during peak season right now, but dropping four categories in those other two timeframes. I, before I would support that, I would need to intuitively be able to draw that conclusion.
Yeah, I, um, I, I heard both what Tom, Jim said, that, you know, Tom, uh, you know, talked about uh the, um. He, he was saying uh, uh, going with a, a different rate structure for uh. The first couple of weeks of July, I can see that, not for this season. Uh, I think. To Tom's point, bumping it up right now, it may, uh. When, when we're probably not going to have electric on V ten, it's probably going to be a, a big uh. Game of the roll of the dice, but I do uh go back to Mike's comment that where else are you going to go? So, um, I, I did have a lengthy conversation with Tom about this. And, and I, I thought it was a great idea. I understand where you're coming from, Tim, but the numbers are so low in the off seasons that, you know, it's like. It was mainly a way to try to build it up. Even if you, even if you doubled it, you're still only barely to fifty percent occupancy in, in the. Early season and the off season. So you didn't lose it and you gained a little bit anyhow. Even at lower than four categories. So I, I, I thought it was a great move. Uh, we talked a lot last year that, you know. If we're going to try and pay for this marina that everybody wants, this thing gets, needs to move all the, you know, all the way, but. Uh, that's neither here nor there. And which is kind of what uh Mr. Murphy just alluded to, to, you know. You just can't, you can't build, you know, uh, six million dollars marinas and uh and, and charge this minimal cost. Uh, so I, I don't have a problem with it all. I don't, I wouldn't want to deal with it. I don't know. Uh, we've already handled with this, you know, Mike, I believe you, you're saying that we still have time to get this in the reservation system? Uh, we were told that we went past September, but we're going to the reservation system. I don't know who you would be impressed. Um, so and, and that's not on you. I mean, I get it. It's, it's D N R, but I mean, I, I don't know who, I don't know who to believe. So I don't think. Think it's, I think it's a good plan. Mr. Allen talked about it that, you know. You, you know, how you, how you, how you, uh, you know, propose one or rate again because of D doc, but I think we just gotta do it and. Rip up a bandaid, rip up a bandaid and we have one on D dots. I mean. Absolutely. Or, uh. All right, yeah, I, I support it, but I, I understand Tim's concern.
Are you?
The numbers go the door. Something to me as well.
See in twenty twenty, I was thirteen percent and then thirty six percent. I mean, is it in the weather?
Well, I think you can vary between twenty twenty.
Right, right.
Because it's the, it's very, so like these numbers go towards a ten percent, it's not real, you know, it's uh. But even thirty percent, you know, it's so low. The other thing, you, you know. Can I add one thing to that? I don't think we advertise. Uh, and this is in the criticism of the city right now. I think that in, in all these meetings, everybody here said, well, they're waiting list. I can't get in. You know, here. So there's everybody out here. Did you know that you could take a boat down there and get in anytime you wanted? Probably have these people that, huh? You know, so it, it's, it, it's different, you know. So there are two different types of boats, transient things. I don't think we advertise it. So I think if you advertise it, if you, if you take a new rate structure, you advertise it properly, I, our fishermen are gone here now. But I mean, I think even the fishermen go, hey, I can bring my boat down now. Sorry, yeah.
At the end of the day, we have the ability to do this again next year if when the.
Yeah.
So we'll know that's being always done next year, whether this is.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I entertain motion. Yeah. A motion. So I already made a motion that the city commission, who we recommended to twenty twenty three transit rates and allows city staff. With those rates, this D N R, per entry into the C K A M I S C. If there's a second. Okay. If you had a second, any other objection?
Tomlin.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Nick Hammond.
Hi.
Patrick.
Hi.
Patrick.
Hi.
I'll be here.
Thank you. Can I add one word to that? Can we, why can't we take pizza gear and, you know, can we take two dollars out of our rate right now? If you do that. Can we do whatever for one? Yeah, I think it's just something uh held accountable over to the D N R, uh, what it means. No, I wouldn't say tag it or not. I'm saying whatever the rate is, we in our market. Well, that's internal. Okay, moving on. Um, we have item nine B. Under revision, Mark, in spark grant application request for the proposed state park. Consider the recommendation considering Michael Canadian's request, the committee board, state park. Private one, secret board, all rights staff, they look at them. Or if in submitting a spark grant in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars. On behalf of the city, which doesn't exist in the proposed Rotary Park. State park. Mike, do we have representatives?
Yes, we do. Yeah. Um, as the commissioner may recall, at a recent meeting, we gave approval uh uh. For the construction of a public skate park at Rotary Park. Uh, the skate park board has achieved an early estimate uh indicating a cost of approximately sixty thousand, sixty dollars a square foot for the construction of a six thousand square foot park. At their meeting last week, our park board got the possibility of applying for the state's new spark grant program. And you may recall that there's like sixty five million dollars total, uh, three grant cycles for it. The first one is due on December nineteenth. Um, after they considered various options like the open space and things of that nature. Uh, it was moved by Copland, supported by Friedrich, that a recommendation be submitted to uh the city commission here tonight. Uh, for the city to assist uh and support the state park in submitting an application for the sparks grant due to. Which is, like I said, due December nineteenth, and that was passed unanimously. So it's here tonight. Uh, since then, the Spark uh Skate Park group is engaging conversations with local surveying company. And have, but they can't get their uh survey done before March. Uh, they look to provide a detailed. Get a detailed quote in anticipation of completing the application uh in time for the spark grant. Um. The skate park uh and board and also the park board felt that this project is a good candidate for funding. And is also requesting that the city commission consider allowing them. Uh, with, and there are five O one C three, the skate park committee, to request funding in the full amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to basically undertake the project. Uh, if the commissioner approved that today, uh, the skate park board will work with city staff to, so that we can get the grant application submitted by the deadline. So it's a recommendation uh that the city commission allows us to go forward with that. And we do have representatives from the skate park committee that can speak to this.
Greg, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, um, just to bring you as up to date as possible and all of that.
Greg, you should identify yourself first.
I'm Greg Baden, uh, seven one seven first street. I'm on the Parks and Rec board and I'm the vice president of the skate park board. Uh, it's been developing very fast. Appreciate the. You know, uh, passing of the uh location approval at the last meeting and um. And yeah, everything that Mike just said kind of brings you guys up to speed. Um, I've been digging into the spark grant after talking with Dawn at the Parks and Rec board and then I went and spoke with Lynn, uh, with Tomba. Because she was on the call as well. So I've sort of been interfacing with two different people that were, that were on the call there. I went to the Tomba meeting yesterday and met that board and, and kind of put us on the radar with them as well. And they indicated that they'd be more than happy to help assist, you know, with that. We have some other grant. Ideas, but this is a great candidate. I've dug into this thing that I've done a little bit of grant work before and. Um, the only unanswered question is, is does this grant uh. Provide partial funding and I, you know, it was sort of between Dawn and I, I figured if they do, then, and we asked for the whole amount. And they get, and we get something, we get something. Um, and if they don't, they don't. So whether we ask for half the funding, they don't give it to us, or we ask for the whole thing. You know, so be it. Why not, why not ask for it? It's a, it's a small percentage of the full sixty five million dollars. And so, um, I'm, I'm, and I'm really confident that we'll have numbers uh even before the next commission meeting. I've been in touch with our contact with Spawn Ranch. She's traveling and I kind of asked him to, to help him get. A, a real, you know, hard number quote on this and he promised to do that in the next week. I said, I understood the holidays, but you know, we're, we're pushing forward with those grants. That's kind of the random.
Who is Spawn Ranch, Greg?
Spawn Ranch is a California-based uh skate park company. Uh, specifically, the reason we're dealing with them is because they most recently uh. Were the company that built the park in Houghton Hancock, way up there on, uh, he went off and so I. I was looking for companies that build north of forty fifth and really hard northern uh conditions. Uh, they're constructing two or three others in Minnesota right now, uh, Ohio, I believe. I've, I've got a list of the other parks working out, but they're. They do concrete work and skate parks in northern planets. So that's kind of why I run them.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, any comments or questions from the audience? Okay. Sorry.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I support it if it's, if it helps initiate progress with this initiative, absolutely. Um. Most work.
I have a question. Also. Is it outside or not? It's my. Is there still one?
Yeah. Yeah, anyway. I have a small score.
Yeah, I, yeah, I support this too, but it really is something, uh, skate park is, it's a grant that is all of a sudden. You only have the map for a couple of months and uh you didn't pull this off, uh, it's going to be a lightning bolt.
Absolutely. And the momentum, and I, that's my attitude about it. I said, if we can get that. Even if we get part of that, we've got other plans for other grants and we haven't even begun to go into a, a real fundraising push yet. We've raised close to four thousand dollars. Oh, the other update I did want to give you guys just briefly is. We did get a partial, um, a partial grant from the community, the Charlotte Wood Community Foundation. Uh, Alicia just sent me a, a message before the meeting tonight. We got eighteen hundred dollars out of that grant. So, um. Between that and the cans we've returned, you know, we're pushing five grand, which is probably enough to cover that survey. Uh, those guys can get here sooner than March, but. Other than that, yeah, that, that three sixty would get us all the way there and then we can. We can really polish it up. We get three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to finish this project. We can light it up. Really integrate with a lot of other things there. I think it gives us a really great, a really great. You know, shopping arm there, so.
I'm just curious, uh, the retail store that's popping up. So this is already creating an economic engine opportunity.
Yes. I've been very impressed of how fast that happened. I, I kind of, that, that was an eyebrow raiser and I was so, I'm so proud of how fast. Um, Alicia and Chad move on, on ideas that they're passionate about and they've kept me, uh, they've kept me moving too. You know, I see what they've done with this and it makes, it, it does. It just takes a couple of people uh, with passion. And, and the full support that you guys have given us has been awesome as well. I keep bringing that to the group and say, guys, we aren't fighting anything. All we need to find is money. That's easy. You know, we aren't, we haven't been arguing about anything. This is just, this is just a money thing and we're not asking for, I mean, we're. Just asking for the, for the okay to, you know, over these grants and some of the other stuff. So we. I really think that's a really good position.
Appreciate you guys to be a subcommittee on fundraising for the marina.
Yeah, let's do another can track.
I, 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 I think it's important for the mission, so this is the, the first round of our grant, twelve million dollars. There's still fifty million dollars in that year or two. So we, you know, this came along and we were ready to move, but we should be thinking about opportunities for the next one.
Yeah.
That's true. Okay, I entertain a motion on the spark grant application request.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from city manager Michael Kane to approve the request of the city park board and skate park five O one C three board to authorize staff to work for them in submitting its park grant. In the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars on behalf of the city for the purpose of building the proposed Rotary Park skate park.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second? Sorry. Any further discussion? We'll call Jessica.
Moody.
Hi.
Nick Cameron.
Hi.
Aster.
Hi.
No chat.
Hi.
I'll see her.
Thank you. Missioners, are you willing to be two platters that the nation takes place?
Yeah, I can be a breaker.
No, I'm not.
It's pretty awesome.
Um, moving on to item nine B, Happy Northern extension removal.
Fine. Uh, as the commission is aware, we have contracted with local Point City firm, the Happy Northern Cleaning Service for cleaning. The majority of the city hall complex as well as our public restrooms. They have been doing a very good job for us. Uh, our DPW has admitted discussion with them for providing sidewalks, snow removal services. Here around the city hall and downtown on the boardwalk along the river. Uh, there's a quotation attached and maps that specify the areas that we're talking about at this point. Uh, Main Street is apparently also in discussion with them for uh, removal of snow around the pavilion for their winter's farmers market. Uh, snow removal is a new endeavor for them as their, uh, as was their cleaning service when we initially hired them. Uh, we expect that they would provide the same high level of service with snow removal as they have done with their cleanings. Uh, this will help in our efforts to make uh, winter experiences here in Point City better than ever. So it's our recommendation that the city commission approve extending our agreement with the Happy Northern Cleaning Service to include the proposed sidewalks. City hall sidewalks and uh, and at the River Walk, Boardwalk and Alley as outlined at a combined cost of two hundred and ten dollars per occurrence. Like quotes attached. And there's a map showing where it would be done on the boardwalk and also uh, in where it would be done by a city hall.
Do you have?
Yes.
Um, just that the, the two hundred and ten dollars is with salt and sometimes that won't be used. Uh, you know, because sometimes you can get with the heat warmth and things like that. Sorry, I'm not used to speaking. Uh, so, you know, sometimes it will be less than that. So I just wanted to point that out, that it does sound like a highlander, but it sometimes it might not be. And, you know, we'll be completely transparent on what we're laying down or taking down, things like that.
Yeah, and I, I think uh, we care a great deal about our city, we mind children who are up here. So I mean. When we started our cleaning business, we probably need and the transformation running on in Point City. Uh, and we're very hardworking and I think that shows and. Got lots of feedback, um, and uh, the land will do the same thing with sorry, all as well, we're excited to add that to respond and. We have uh, very much for the future, that hopefully we can carry it out as well. Um, I think it's, um, I, I, I think it can be very well. Especially, so.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for the audience?
Okay, moving on. I do have a. Further cost on that, you need to uh, inter uh. See, I'm not there for one less machine and then further cost on that. I have five files. That's really cheap. You're getting a good deal on that. I shouldn't.
Any other comments?
So the Happy Northern takes care of our area as well. Oh, I'm Brenda Wilson. I'm the master engineer in Point City. Um, they take care of our living quarters and I've gone from a lot of places and worked in lots of spaces, but they do a phenomenal job. They're very patient with our staff. They especially understand that we all work very strange hours and we enjoy and lay out are incredible to us and so. Definitely think they'll do a great job. They do a really nice job cleaning our area.
Thank you. What do you want to do?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Uh, I thought it was agreeable to say that I thought it was reasonable. I don't have a problem that hard. All I want to make sure is that uh, um, you know, the seventy five dollars is billed to the city and a hundred and thirty five dollars is billed directly to the uh, uh, Main Street. That's where it should be. Or what they have.
City normally takes care of the sidewalks. Downtown in that area. That's what I'm saying. Didn't you want to pay for that?
Well, I think we need to, if that's our, I'm a major. That's what I'm saying. I, I would want a hundred and thirty five dollars billed to Main Street. And seventy five. They're taking a lot of dead money.
And you pay seventy five thousand dollars service to your main street three year.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll pray in the prayer mode. Yes, you can, uh, who decided when it's time to do this? I think it's uh, it, you or.
Yes.
And in the inch or two inches?
I'll have to review that. I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I don't, yes, but normally Darcy would make the calls with regards to that. The only question I had is uh, snow removal agreement. Um, I'm familiar with. Those contracts and typically the stipulations on X amount of inches, blah, 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 blah. Um, I just don't see that here. Um, and the only other question I had is on the city hall one. I was under the interpretation, wasn't the, these heated walkovers? Certain portions of them are correct. So this. So they would be, there would be snow removal on a heated sidewalk? No. Yeah.
So the red line going to the front doors.
Correct.
Then where the heated sidewalk is.
Correct. And then some of those uh, basically along the uh. Front parking spaces uh, up to the uh. So, uh, west side sidewalk that goes behind the police department, that's heated in there. There is this, the segment between uh. The east parking space and Lake Street, uh, that gets snowed over. And pretty much everything from the sidewalk behind the police department and east of the, the, actually west of the police department is unheated as well. And that's just me working out really? Yes, it is. No problem with the, with rather than here.
Now, the only question I have is on the boardwalk, why do you stop there? Don't do a full walk. And if we pause the alley, what happens to that? That's the one we're going to be uh, in competition when. Does, does a DPW come to there with a pickup with?
Yes. Yes.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering, you know, if the whole boardwalk open, why stop which uh. Like someday for somebody to consider in the future. I don't want to give a little bit of a technical. Or launch it, you know, wow, weird.
Well, I think we're going to have to take a look at all of our snow removal. I mean, the, the Main Street board, kind of as Marty indicated, uh, I've been having a lot of discussions on this since last year. And I think we're really trying to step up our game in regards to requiring people to uh, take care of sidewalks. I think it's going to have to apply to us as well too. Especially around some of those parking areas where you're kind of like. No one's responsibility other than to do our overall. Once a day cleaning if it's necessary.
Hey, I have an interview motion on the uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation considering manager Michael Kane. And extending the agreement would have the Northern Cleaning Service to include the proposed city hall sidewalks and River Walk, Boardwalk. And Alley as outlined at a combined cost of two hundred and ten dollars per night.
If you want to include anything of like fine tuning the contract in, or should we just get through this one and uh, be able to do it later?
I think if you did, I, I mean, from the fact that just provided, uh, I think they're gonna. Yeah, and if it comes in, you can address it.
Is there a second? Is motion start? All right, any further discussion? Jessica?
Nick Cameron.
Hi.
Aster.
Hi.
No chat.
Hi.
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 I'll see her.
And will we know insurance coverage change?
As part of our labor agreements and personal practices, uh, there is a committee that annually reviews our proposed health center, vision and related insurances. Uh, renewals to see if they continue to best meets our needs or if any changes should be considered. Uh, this committee is made up of representatives, police parking unit or DPW water wastewater parking unit, uh, non union employees management. Uh, this past year, we were hit with a double digit uh, rate increases for the first time in years. Um, and our recent history prior to that had been pretty reasonable increase. The commission may recall that in July, this committee recommended a change in agents overseeing these coverages. Uh, that recommendation was approved by the city commission and we're now working with Meadowbrook Insurance Agency out of Southfield and had been since August first. We are now in the process of reviewing our uh, insurance carriers for coming year, uh, which starts for us in January uh, for twenty twenty three. For the past month or so, the committee has been reviewing insurance options uh, from various carriers with Meadowbrook. As a result of those reviews, the committee is recommending that the city change our health insurance provider from Priority Health and the Health Savings Account. And the Health Savings Account, uh, plan that we've had with them for many years. To Blue Care Network of Michigan's. Blue Elect Plus HSA POS Gold Two Thousand High Deductible Healthcare Plan with medical and prescription drug coverage. That's their technical name, so I want to make sure I got it right. In switching agents, we were able to be classified as small group rather than large group. That was one of the things that Meadowbrook taught to us that Forte Flynn was not able or unwilling to bring to us previously. That change alone would have saved us, the city and its employees, nearly fifteen thousand dollars or some uh, six point six eight percent premium cost. If we had just stayed with our current uh, priority health plan and uh, some of these costs are outlined on page two of the attach sheets. Uh, the proposed plan that is uh, references option five. And would save us an additional twenty three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. For a total of thirty eight thousand, five hundred and ninety two dollars or seventeen point two five percent over what we are paying now. This means an estimated uh, premium reduction from our current. Uh, two hundred and twenty three thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars to about a hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars in the coming year. This is an estimate because uh, kind of we talked about with insurances in the past, things change, people come on and go off programs. Uh, and that could impact uh, the actual numbers as we go through a given year. Uh, we provided uh, coverage comparison summaries between the various options of those were, that, as were explored. And those are shown on pages two and three with a more detailed uh, covered document of the. Uh, proposed new plan provided at the end of the report. All this information was reviewed by the agents and the committee members who then shared with employees in their respective areas of the city. Uh, doctors that were accepting the new plan, uh, were also exploring that with much disgust. One of the major changes by switching the uh, plans is the elimination of the twenty percent co-insurance payments that are required. From uh, covered employees for both services. This on top of the lower premium costs, which are shared on an eighty twenty basis with all covered employees, will be a cost savings to those covered employees. Also, as shown on page three, there are some increases in prescription costs that employees may experience. Uh, the agents and the committees also reviewed the city's existing dental, vision, life insurance, long-term disability coverages. And compared that to other options. There were no prices increases proposed for any of those coverages in the coming year. Other providers of some of these coverage offered potential savings. But as was determined by the committee and the agents for lower coverages, so they didn't really, we didn't see a real benefit in that. Uh, the recommendation from the, our agents and the committee is to leave these coverages with our current providers for the coming year. So everything except for the health insurance would stay the same. Uh, with the proposed change, the estimated savings to the city in the coming year will be about thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy three dollars over what we currently pay. I am recommending that we share a portion of uh, that savings with the covered full-time employees. Participating in our health insurance program by increasing the city's annual health savings account contribution. From seventeen hundred and fifty dollars per single employee coverage to thirty five hundred and thirty five hundred dollars per double. Increasing them two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars respectively for new totals of two thousand and four thousand respectively. Assuming that twenty employees receive uh, these uh, contribution, two of them being single coverage of uh, coverages. The additional cost would be about ninety five hundred dollars. It's a recommendation of myself and on behalf of the committee. Uh, that the commission authorized staff to proceed with changing the city's employee healthcare to Blue Care Network of Michigan Blue. Elect Plus HSA POS Gold Two Thousand Dollar High Deductible Health Plan with medical and prescription drug coverage. And increase the city's health savings account contribution to two thousand and four thousand for eligible. In double or family members' coverages respectively. If you look on. Um, page two here. Uh, and you look at the small, either one of the first two uh, left columns where it says current large group or a small group renewal. And you look under the deductible. Uh, you'll see what those are right now, um, and the, the fifteen hundred and three thousand. And you'll see that under option five would be, it go, those increase to two thousand and four thousand. Those uh, increases would be offset. And kind of holding the employees harmless by increasing the HSA contribution. Which is something we try to keep that in the ballpark for in the past. So. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on any of this information.
So just so I understand, Greg, there, there's a savings of thirty thousand and seventy three here that is just paid. And of that ninety five hundred dollars, you'd be reimbursed for the board.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, any uh, counter questions? They weren't true.
So, so the savings to the. That the employee would receive, that he is a higher, it's a higher. Deductible amount of their health, is that?
No, there's actually, there's actually three areas that I think they'll see savings. One, the overall, they pay a portion of the insurance cost. That cost is going down. By uh, what is it, fourteen or so percent. So they'll be paying twenty percent less of that. that overall premium cost, which is a lower number. So their cost on the property will be lesser than beginning there. They'll have increased savings because of the lack of the co-insurance on many of the procedures that are covered. So traditionally right now, even after I met my HSA deductible, if I go to the doctor's office, whatever that bill is, I would pay as the employee, I would pay twenty percent of that and the insurance company would pay eighty percent of that. That goes to a hundred percent now that the insurance company will pay. There is no twenty percent on insurance. That's another thing. And the third level of savings will be the additional money that they have available to them in their HSA account, which is theirs to use. They use it this year, they can save some up in a good year and use the brother thing. That'll also, I mean, but I also want to make sure that here and the committee reviewed all this. That even with those savings, there is some potential increase with regards to prescription cost. Though that portion of the plan is not quite as beneficial.
I don't see a downside to that. Well, I appreciate the review. How often do you?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Annual, yeah.
I appreciate your staff as an employee. Appreciate your safety. I'm very sure that you know that's.
Is there a committee rep or a member here? Jessica was in on the meeting with us. I'm trying to think if anybody else was here, is here? No. You weren't there. So the committee is in full support? Yes, there and they were. They knew that it was coming to the commission meeting tonight, right? It it was a unanimous vote of all members of the present at the meetings, right? Um, I mean, it's a no brainer. The only thing I, the only thing I it's not disagree with, but I think the ninety five hundred, ninety five hundred dollars is for the ninety, the nine thousand, five hundred dollars is weak. And when I say that is just being blunt, we have such a high turnover right now. And I I feel we should be looking at ways to incentivize long term employees right now. And out of the thirty thousand, we're gonna save where you're at. I I feel like we can do better and that's just my opinion when it comes to that. But I I understand and I'm just gonna be blunt. There's a lot of hostility right now and I feel a lot, I feel like we need to focus more on what we can do for our employees. And that might be able to help us with our turnover. That's some good. And so, but that's that.
Yeah, no, I for one thing I was going ten's direction. I'll clarify that in a second. But I guess what I need clarification from you. My is, so I thought we were saving thirty eight thousand, five hundred dollars, but now we're saving thirty thousand, eight hundred.
Oh, yeah, that's another thing. My calculation was thirty thousand, five hundred and ninety two. Yeah.
That that's what you had, I don't pay more.
Yeah, you're correct. Okay, so the not so technically or it's forty thousand dollar savings. We're paying a, we're giving a quarter of that to correct the staff.
So that's where I was going. And and then you asked me that question. I was like, oh, all right, maybe I would want, but. So if we're only giving twenty five percent back, again, looking at all the trouble that we have, but you know, police department, you know, staffing, everywhere. It just ends up. I I guess the other, I I would like to manipulate that a little bit, I believe, because I think it was more on, you know, the the staff that, you know, started down this path. And so if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be realizing the savings to begin with. But one question with that is so the staff, the staff shows that having the HSA, you know, you know, because I've heard, you know, about their, you know, their monthly contributions or whatever and stuff like that to their, to their health insurance. They didn't want to put on that aspect. To the HSA, there you go. That's good. But then I agree with Tim that I think that, you know, I think we can do better because I think it might help with our turnover. And I think we've got to adjust it somehow in a legitimate way of adjusting it and and helping, you know, retention. I I would, I would like to explore that a little bit more. One of the, and then I'll go back to you here. The one other question that I had. So we've been classified wrong all this time. Do we have any action to, you know, go back and, you know, appeal that? And so we've been getting raped for fifteen thousand dollars around the years for because we're misclassified. I guess I abrupt that.
Part of I know, I think we've been classified as a large carrier, as a large employer, as long as we've been in the prior.
Okay, but that doesn't make it right.
No, I didn't. I know it. There was a lot of frustration with that last year.
So there's no, there's, there's no appeal, no replication. I I mean, I just say not go back forever. But I mean, we can't sit there and go back any.
I can check with the city attorney and see.
Well, I would like to because I think that's an important, an important aspect. Other than that, I'm I'm full support, but I think it's it's a no brainer. George said in town. There's no do that part. And then I'll agree with him that I think it's funny that we're trying to retain staff and trying to correct.
And just to be fully transparent, I did have an employee reach out to me and concerns of the hour on that HSA. So just curious to what's gonna happen with the additional ones? The gap between forty and ninety five hundred? But the thirty, thirty eight thousand were saving ninety five. Where where does the rest go? There just won't be a span.
We request wide and budget issue. So why we, can we approve this tonight and have you come back with an option for a veteran or something?
Sure, yeah.
So that is an option we have.
Yeah. How do you feel? I certainly hear what you're saying with regards to incentivizing. And if there's a way to do something like that, I'm not opposed to it.
With that being said, even if we split a bit of it.
Well, the city does make, you know, with all the increases that we've had, the city carries the burden, the eighty percent of all those increases.
Oh, right.
And this is the first time that we've gone back and had decrease. And you're correct. And it's basically because of the committee's work with regards to that. That's why the committee was set up. The committee's been meeting every year and, you know, last year, when we really saw the increases come through Portisland after years of zero percent increases or single rate, nobody really questioned it. It really was questioned last year and they couldn't provide good answers.
Okay, well, I would support the recommendation, but I I would like to see, you know, you come back to your commission some allocation and.
I'd bring that back at the next meeting because we make those allocations of the first of the year.
So the number, what is, the number we're talking about is that rather than thirty thousand, eight seventy three, it's thirty eight thousand, five nine two.
Yes, and I'll verify that. It should be. Yeah, it's just a two twenty three, seven thirty three minus the one eighty five, one four port. Got to get up to thirty eight, two, fifty nine, two.
Okay, I would undertake a motion on the.
So what does that motion look like? It's coming back.
Hold on, the.
Make a motion. You can make a motion without the HSA contribution.
We're the exception that we're gonna bring it back.
So I'll approve the recommendation from city manager Michael Kane to authorize city staff to proceed with changing the city's employee health plan. Blue Care Network of Michigan's Blue in Life Plus HSA POS Gold Two Thousand High Deductible Health Plan with Medicaid, medical and prescription drug coverage. And that's that. The rest I'm leaving off, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
There's something.
Uh, yes, let's go back to the thirty eight, five nine two. That's hundred percent of the premium savings, okay? The thirty thousand, eight seventy three number is correct. When you take that thirty eight, five ninety two and multiply by point eight, which is the city's portion of that, that thirty thousand is the city's portion of the savings. The other, what is it gonna be? Almost eight thousand dollars is money that the employees are saving right off the bat, kind of going back to George's earlier question. Okay, so and I wasn't remembering that. I mean, I I thought maybe I slipped a digit there, but I just ran the numbers and then both those numbers aren't correct. So that thirty thousand represents just the thirty thousand, the city's portion. Right.
Thank you. Ready to roll call, Jessica?
Uh, Lester.
Hi.
Benjy.
Hi.
Hi.
Rosie.
Hi.
You can.
Hi.
Washington.
We can not go, it's like a man. What else could be placed the ocean? Valves replacement?
Yeah, this is the first two of the memos with regards to investments in our water wastewater system. And the first one is with regard to two isolation valves for water production, well, number three that have gone bad. Well, number three is basically located behind the nineteen ten building up basically as far back as you can go at the base of Avalanche there before you get into Avalanche. And it's now gotten to the point where no matter how hard our crews work to close the valves, they will not fully close. The ability to close these valves is necessary to perform proper maintenance in the wellhouse and the systems related to it. This matter was brought to my attention along with several of our water wastewater personnel over the last few months. I have begun to review them on a case by case basis with our consulting engineers and other experts to determine kind of how a set priority that vest of meet these as efficiently as possible. With the approved repairs to nearby well number two, the only other water production well on the south side of the city still several months off. That commit, the commission has approved that project, but we're waiting for the firm to do that. And they're saying that it won't be until spring. The efficient and proper operation of well three is essential. We have obtained the attached quotation from our well maintenance company, Peerless Midwest, for a price of nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars to replace both both backs. As noted in the quotation and the attached pictures showing the exact valves that need to be replaced, these are large valves of eight or ten and eight inches respectively as going from the photo from right to left. I can bring that up in a sec. Peerless Midwest would provide and install valves. Given the scope of this work and other tasks that our crew would tend to is not practical to perform this work at this time. As this is an estimate, I would propose that we be authorized to spend up to ten thousand, five hundred dollars for this work with additional funding is necessary to be undertaken while doing this project. This well has been there for quite some time. As you know, whenever you open up an old house, there's some surprises that may jump out at you. We want to make sure that we're covered with that. There are adequate funds available in the water department to cover this expense. So it's a recommendation that the city commission authorized replacement of water production well number three's isolation valves at a cost not to exceed ten, ten thousand, five hundred dollars. We have the quote from Peerless in here. And here is the picture of the two valves. One's showing the water coming up from the ground itself. That's more of the wrench on the top of it. And another one going up through the side of the building off of there. Neither of those valves can be closed completely, which makes maintenance on the rest of the well in the well, well system in there. In some cases, impossible because of water pressure. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on that.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments or questions from the audience?
Yes, John Howe, Michigan Rural Water Association. I'm the firm operator in charge. That I totally agree with my sense of the critical infrastructure. We have no way to shut that or isolate that well off. If anything happens to it, there's no way to repair it right now. We have to repair those valves first before we buy it to the well. Station, we can't shut that valve, the one on the right, that valve right there goes to what I refer to as a roll off. Since we can't shut it, there's a possibility to get contamination in that well and we turn on that well, half the water is gonna go out that pipe. The other half is gonna ruin the system. So it really needs to be fixed.
Mr. Howe, could you explain your relationship to the city?
Yes, I I am with group published in Rural Waters Association. We're a nonprofit organization funded by EPA, USDA, and this are taken here as enlisted our services for operator in charge. You have to maintain for your wastewater system a B wastewater operator and a D two water drinking water operator along with what's called an S three water operator. I have those licenses and I'm providing those services for three months. Go charge. After that, we'll have to have a discussion with my boss. But that's our, that's my relationship right now with you. So I'm signing you with your, your monthly reports going into the state and I put in my license on it. I'm aligned for that.
How long are you with the staff?
Every two weeks.
Any comment or? All right, Tom.
Yeah, it's routine maintenance. It sounds more than routine maintenance. Purple maintenance. To the budget, appreciate your expertise. Welcome, Boyne City. Sir. Welcome, Boyne City. You got a better altar. So I'm I'm full support.
Uh, we're risking with anything as far as compliance liability or safety, but the issues we're having right now.
For well, our compliance, yeah, if eco came in and found those wells in the condition they are, they would probably tell you to leave, get those fixed and probably will refer to, refer to the sanitary survey. They come in and they write that as a deficiency, which means once you get that deficiency, you better fix it because the administrative center around on the corner, if you don't fix it.
And thanks to that, you're full support.
Yeah, I answered it as the critical names. I don't know where.
You too. So how long have you been engaged with the city?
One season. I want to say closer to three, but.
Maybe this sort of cat eye. No, two, he said two weeks.
Oh, yeah, okay, one street. I can start with yes. So moving forward, moving forward, as you mentioned, having a relationship with the city, what, what would that look like?
That would be, we would probably go under what would be a contract services with you and we're charged for that. We, and the reason we do that is we've got taken advantage of in the past where communities have said, oh, we got a little water. We're not gonna look for anybody. Yeah, thank you for that. And no, we, we're not, we're not here. We're here to help provide technical services. And we're here to help communities get better. We're not here to run your system. So we, we said, okay, we have, so we put a cutoff at three months. So at that point, there'll be a contract between Rural Water and City Boyne City. We're usually at eighty five dollars an hour, which we, to be honest, relatively, we, we don't, we don't charge exorbitantly. If you look at other contractors, I've seen small communities charge a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to provide the services that I'm providing. So.
So would this be a long term solution for the city since we're having a hard time with the water?
It could be, but well, I'm gonna be honest, like you said, it'll be a long term solution. However, licenses that are required by your system are in high demand right now. I know the city of Carroll looked over a year in offering a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for the position, had trouble finding a position. They're still, they're still looking. And it's been almost coming up to two years now. Saginaw Shipwreck Tribe has been looking for three years and have had issues finding somebody. Harbor Springs was offering a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for their position. Took them nine months to find somebody and that was just the wastewater plant. So you, you might be in the wild ball trying hard time finding somebody. Uh, so you, you might be in the wild ball trying hard time finding someone.
Do you have a business card? Or do you have a business card? Not on me right now, either, but I'll get one. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations from City Manager Mike McCain to authorize a replacement of water production well three. Isle, about that it costs, I think, ten thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, in June of this year, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Eagle. They inspected our, uh, sample testing lab at the wastewater treatment plant. And subsequently required the city to upgrade the equipment in the lab and the procedures in using it to ensure that it meets the state standard. And remains an out of violation. Uh, since his arrival earlier this month, our consultant and primary wastewater, uh, big license holder, John Holland, who you've just met. Uh, the Michigan Rural Water Association has been developing plans that will be acceptable to the state. To meet the improvements called for in the lab. Uh, Mister Holland is regarded as one of the state's leading experts in this area. Not only does he hold state water and wastewater licenses meeting and exceeding the state's requirements. Uh, for our, what our plant could need. He has also trained many of the other experts in this area across the state. In his work with the Michigan Rural Water Association, he provides similar services to the ones we're providing, uh, for us. Uh, to water wastewater facilities across the state. Uh, once purchased and used. Once purchased and used, our lab would be using equipment and procedures. Used in an estimated eighty-five percent or more of similar municipal labs in across Michigan. Including in areas such as Bataski, Mackinac City, John was telling me earlier, East Jordan, and, uh, some other communities as well. Over the weekend, Mister Holland completed obtaining quotes for purchasing the equipment necessary to meet the state's requirements. The equipment purchase proposed, uh, come from four vendors and total just under thirty thousand dollars. And would come primarily from our, I mean, it would be funded primarily from our wastewater fund. Since the equipment would mainly be used for tests related to wastewater samples. Uh, these funds, the water wastewater, have more than sufficient, uh, revenue and funds available to cover these purchases. Mister Holland compared various vendors where they existed for the projects. Uh, some of the products were only, uh, proprietary and not available from multiple sources. He also researched possible grants and has continued to work with some of the vendors to determine whether any lower prices could be obtained. So there, there were four major items, uh, and they're provided, uh, with reference information to really break these items down. And they're identified as a hatch equipment for sixteen thousand dollars, which includes various lab equipment. IDECs for ten thousand five hundred and seventy-seven, also for various lab equipment. Uh, Thomas Scientific for, uh, a lab refrigerator, and then their very calibrated lab refrigerator is not like the one I have for my. Stuff in the garage. And USA Blue Book for a master thermometer. Uh, that's one thermometer that is basically used for, uh, calibrating all the other thermometers that are used in the lab as they're doing their tests. The prices on those came to, for the estimates were two, uh, twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, some quotes did not include the shipping cost. Again, all the reference pages that were included, reference to each of those, uh, show the more detailed. Items to be purchased and their cost. Mister Holland, as you can see, is, and heard, is here, uh, and can help address questions on these, but he knows his equipment a lot better than I do. Uh, but it's my recommendation that the city commission approve the purchase of lab equipment for the water wastewater system. From various vendors at an outlined price. Uh, of thirty thousand dollars. Again, I left some wiggle room in there. Uh, John is working to actually lower some of the prices. He did check out a grant. It doesn't look like it's very viable at this time. Uh, but we do need to go and get this equipment to stay in the good graces of the state. So, um, that's a recommendation. Obviously, John can answer any, uh. Much more detailed questions than I can. I'd gladly answer what I can.
I'll just add, uh, when I, when I came in and I looked at your lab, the lab was. Pretty good, as I told, like, pretty good for about nineteen ninety-five, about two thousand. Uh, machines have upgraded since then, a lot of businesses have upgraded. And I'm not a pro stone with your old operator, he, you know, he did what he saw, but. Get ten operators together and something, they're gonna have ten different opinions on this stuff. Um, but it's, this is what I put that, this is what. Now wastewater plants are moving to. Referred to as a DR thirty-nine hundred. What it does is it takes a current test, it takes four hours to do the, and that's about an hour and a half. So there's some time savings there, and with your staff out there, with three people at the moment, time savings is a huge issue. They can redeploy and do something else, wash irons, turn valves, what have you. So it would be a time saver, and that machine will replace three other machines, or, yeah, basically three other machines. And one, one test that you're contracting out right now, which is just, it's. Probably a very minor amount, but then now you can do it in-house, you don't have to ship it out.
Any, uh, questions or comments from the few members who are in value?
Are you demanding those business sites? I guess my question is, so, I guess I'm a little scared. How, how we made it as, or we did it without all this other stuff.
Well, it's. It's just time to upgrade. It's, it's, uh, like you're Marina, you'll get your docks. It's kind of great, you're dogs, and just like your lab, it's kind of time to upgrade you.
I'll make a motion. To approve the purchase of lab equipment to the water waste system from various vendors as outlined at an estimate price of thirty thousand.
Well, Mister Holland, thanks, thanks very much for calling here and saying.
You're welcome. Always glad to help, and I like to make one comment before I leave, I watched, uh. You handle this, obviously Marina's contentious issue. And I've had the opportunity through nine years of being a rural water to see. A lot of contentious issues to where the, uh, chief of police had to take over. And he's, that's been that bad, and, uh, you've handled, but this was all both on your side and this side, no yelling, very civil. Kudos to the community who handled, I think, handled it very well, one of the best contentious issues I've seen.
We're trying. Thanks, thank you.
And I'll bring some parts up before I leave.
Thanks, John.
Every one.
Yeah, so, um, we are required by the open meetings act to formally adapt the meeting schedule each year. And Ash, please find the calendar for the twenty, twenty-three, according to the other city commission meetings. Highlighted in the blue are the dates for seven P M meetings, and highlighted in orange are the dates, normally at twelve P M. This, with the exception of December, falls the same second, and have Tuesday of the month scheduled that we've had followed for several years. All meetings will be held here at the nineteen North Lake Street. All meeting dates are clear except for the fourth Tuesday of December twenty. It has been a longstanding practice to cancel a city mission meeting around Christmas and New Year's holiday. If need, if need arises for a meeting towards the end of the calendar year, a special meeting can be called. I propose to keep Thursday, March sixteenth, Monday, March twentieth, and Thursday, March twenty-third, open for budget review sessions with people. There are no statewide election schedules for twenty twenty-three that I am aware of. There will still be a city general election in November. This could result in a primary election in August. You may want to know that if this, if there is a primary election in August, it will fall on our first meeting of the month on, 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 on. The schedule presented to you does not propose a change in that meeting as, as is unknown that this election will take place. You may want to consider making adjustments on August eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting day, when I move in the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. Also included is a proposed full year ending twenty twenty-four, to end the budget schedule for your rule.
Uh, just to go with regards to the election on August, potential election on August eighth. Uh, Jessica and I talked about that as, after she. After she prepared the memo. And the reason that we both agreed that we should leave this or recommend it the way it is, leaving it alone, is you'll know in April. Whether there's gonna be a primary or something need to be done in August, and that gives you a lot of time to make a change later on, so we thought. Leaving it okay, you're not gonna be in a rush situation if you do want to make a change, so. I'll turn, turn to our clerk.
Anything else?
No, that's the only thing. Yeah, that's all, not a matter of any. Um, I mean, there's potentially two days on the budget that I won't be available. Which takes. Uh, it would be the April ones. So it would be the actual overall mission meeting.
Would be approved.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that, maybe as we get closer, uh. Cause we, we need to have it adopted.
It's before May what? That's the issue, it's the deadline, what May? Yeah, our charter is weird. Uh, our fiscal year starts May first, with the charter requirement, we don't have to have the budget adopted by May first. We always have, what's that?
Many months, like the deadline.
It's, I'd have to go back and check the, the actual, uh, exact date, but it's. It's after our fiscal year starts, which doesn't make any sense, but that's what it is. I'm not gonna pull my card that we've all got in our pocket. Um, until I guess I'll know more so during the actual work sessions. And kind of what we're staying. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation. For setting the commission meeting schedule for year ending twenty twenty-three budget schedule. From City Clerk Treasurer, Jessica Pearl, to approve its regular meeting schedule. For twenty twenty-three, the second Tuesday of each month at seven P M, and the fourth Tuesdays. Each month except December at twelve P M. With all meetings to be held at Point City Hall, three nineteen North Lake Street in Point City, Michigan. And also approve the. For year ending twenty twenty-three kind of the budget schedules presented.
Right now, I'm sorry, I just realized we had to do a three game, we could have moved to one earlier, but I'm sure you want it's.
Yeah, it's basically what I called you about, it's just, um, just the ten or twelve, I think I'm in full support of it, um. And I think the remaining of the commissioners is just, just for the maintenance and efficiency of the invoice there.
Uh, I would, you understand, I think it was a title, was there a title?
Yes, so it was supposed to state that we're receiving twelve A E Ds. Their trainers and twelve mannequins to match. The invoice, he caught it, reads very strange because they built the package for us. Um, McKesson doesn't actually carry these, they're our government purchaser. They have worked with another company to give us government pricing, and. So it just read very strange, and I did not catch that. Uh, it's twelve and twelve, and then four inch mannequins, because you work in teams on that anyway, that's not. This is a huge, huge addition to our equipment. Um, the mannequins that we have were probably bought in the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties, um. In two thousand and nineteen, the A H A passed a requirement that you had to have some kind of a feedback device. And I can see why, in teaching CPR, people go too fast, they go too slow. Um, our hospital's survival of cardiac arrest is less than ten percent. Um, I put the statistics in there, forty-seven percent of them will have neuro public setting. More than half of the public is not trained to do CPR, and so with this, we can increase that awareness, we can teach these classes, and it will also create a revenue stream for our team. I already have some classes scheduled, and I get phone calls about this every week. Um, a lot of businesses now require this, so this will be a long-term, uh, revenue stream for us. We're paying to send our staff to other places to take the class at fifty to seventy dollars a head, depending on where we send them, just to keep ours hurting, so. It's a huge cost saving for us.
And I do appreciate the lesson I had always about mannequins, still could, but I didn't realize the two dimensions, one. Fashion and going for medical.
Thank you.
So we get the joint board of commissioners meeting, uh, I, if we could, like. Is it possible that we could do this to another time to consider?
Consider it at that time or schedule for that?
Consider, consider, just consider. All right, well, that brings us to our close session. And there's a request to go into full session, considering the request from City Manager Michael King. You're going to full session with the extension of the bargaining strategy. As provided in N C L one five hundred thirty-three, a mission opens meeting.
I'll make that motion to go into a session. Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah, because I don't anticipate the commission taking any action when we come out of.
Yes, yeah, because I don't anticipate the commission taking any action when we come out of close session.
So. Anyone having, having to put in the order?
Yeah, just, just one, um. It seems like with our agendas, the evening one is packed full of items. And the daytime one is very light. I wonder if we could maybe get, strike a bit of a balance there. Um, and a lot of us work all day and staying here till eleven thirty is, you know. Tired and, and we lose focus after a while.
Yeah.
The daytime one, a lot of us had to take a half day off from work. And if we only get an hour at a time, would take a half day off of work. I just wondered if we could maybe get a little balance there.
Agreed. We will do our best again.
Thank you.
Uh, one item I forgot to mention, uh, during my management report. Uh, I received notice yesterday, uh, from, uh, the, uh, Trailway County, County Transit. That the Ironton Ferry, I think this is his last week of service. And they're anticipating that next Wednesday, it'll, uh, be towed over and, uh, brought to our main boat launch for it, uh. But is there five years or so, uh, ride on inspection on land? So it'll, it's scheduled to show up at the main boat launch next Wednesday. For the.
Okay.
Now, I'm gonna do a motion to. During the middle of the session. Okay, we can't hear it going back. Are we ready to adjourn? We need a motion to. Move the day of the discussion now.
You will once you get into the other room.
Yeah. They will be in there. Me.
Thanks, man. Thanks. Good meeting today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good meeting.
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 Good morning.
Good morning.
Good meeting.